All right, well, we'll call this meeting to order. Thanks everyone for being here and Joey, thank you for giving the pizza. It will make the seven hour meeting seem like nothing. All right, well. Starting point, I don't know if I just review of the current 2022 fiscal year budget. Chris, I'm gonna turn that over to you if you want to kind of give us an overview. Everyone's been provided more copies of the material.
I'm gonna give just a high level overview because we are in the middle of making some changes for this year. But just on some quick percentage numbers, we are.
Chris, can you hold on one second? Your little, your little thing.
And also is he going off of the one that has his little notes on it?
No.
Which copy?
It's the one that, did you have one?
Right now, because I have two copies. They have one without your notes and one with your notes and I just want to make sure.
If you, if you have the one that has any current year-to-date numbers. Do you have a column on there? Let me see what I sent you guys.
We have two copies.
And I think those are, I think you and I have.
So is that actually?
I think they're the same, yeah, so that.
Twenty twenty-two, actually.
That's, yeah.
Yeah. So I believe all the, all the numbers are the same.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that I'm not looking at different ones because I've been around the corners getting a lot of different information.
Are you able to hear me okay? Okay, so the numbers that we're looking at, I'm going through February twenty-eighth, just so it's a cutoff of the month. And sixty-six point six seven percent of the year has passed. We have received just over eighty-six percent of our revenues so far, which a chunk of those are the property taxes. And then overall, we are at fifty-seven point three eight percent of our expenses. So we're riding low on our expenses. But that's typical for this time of year because this is when Corbett and Craig ramp up and start doing maintenance and things like that. So we will be presenting to the council, the next council meeting or two, another public hearing regarding this current fiscal year's budget. Or mayor, we can wait and do it into the June meeting, still make the, make some of the changes now to make sure we're going to be on track. But then do an official public hearing and meeting in the June time so we can finalize things. So that's for the general budget. Now if we just pop onto the capital projects, the most active capital projects is the roads one, uh, roads capital project. Sorry, Carrie, what'd you say?
What's which page number you're slipping over to?
Um, yes, let me get your, I'm using a different report here.
Or share.
It's just easier for us to kind of instead of keep reading and while you're trying to listen to your copy at the same time.
Let me do this. Let me share my screen. Um, I'm just sending you this.
Let me see if I can, are you still there, Chris?
Yes.
Oh, you have to change.
Roads, he says something about roads.
Well, it's the capital.
He said capital projects, um, but again.
So I know what page it's on, on this one, uh, the old.
Yes.
It's page six and that, so I'm not sure where it is.
It's not working here.
Carrie, I'm gonna get something else up here.
Just go like this. Chris, you still there?
Yes.
All right, let's just do this. It's not gonna. Yeah. All right. We're just go ahead.
Okay, can you see that on the screen now?
You will in just a second. There you go.
Okay, so page one. And through.
We just see that it's your.
We just see your email.
Okay, let me see here. Is that better? Is the budget showing amount?
Perfect.
Okay, so the numbers I was just talking about, so we're at eighty percent, eighty-six percent, just over eighty-six percent collected on revenue. So that's basically the top half of page one. On the, the document without the budget notes. Are we okay to use that document or do you want me to use the one with the budget notes or I could use one of the Excel spreadsheets?
We're good.
Okay. Then if we go through page. Five, those total up all the expenses. And so that's where I was talking about, we're fifty-seven point three eight of our expenses. Through this year and we're only looking at the.
Mayor and I have two different ones than what he's showing.
This was the email sent to you March ninth at four thirty-one PM.
Why don't you go to the one that has the notes on it? And that's the one the mayor and that we're looking at. Yeah, I didn't get the attachment, so I just asked Tony to print me up a couple of different ones and when I, she gave me the same one too.
Yeah, I wanted to know that now, any pages, but yeah.
Okay. So when we're, when we're talking now, we're only talking the left-hand column. This is actually titled current year fiscal of twenty-two.
That's page one.
Page one, yeah, so. Are we okay on this, this document I have up here?
Yeah.
Okay. Now this is gonna take us a little bit further through page seven because of the notes for this, for this fiscal year. So for the general account, like I said, we're about fifty-seven point three eight percent expended. Now if we go through the capital projects, we're not doing much in our general capital projects account this year, which is page eight. Page nine is the fire capitals project. There's not much going on there this year except the savings. Page ten is the EMS capital projects. Once again, not much going on there. It's just gonna be a savings account. Page eleven, same with snow plowing, just gonna be a savings account. Page twelve is the one we want to talk about a little bit because this is where we currently actively have some road projects going on. And in this account, for the West Loafer project, it was proposed for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the West Loafer project. And then, um, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to finish spring bottle hall of pine, valley view. And Wayne, this is the one you and I talked about the other day and there's, there's the rest of the money sitting in there. Parks, we're not doing much in parks except the savings account. This is page thirteen. Page fourteen then jumps into our enterprise account or water accounts. And the water account, with sixty-six point six seven percent of the year gone, we have roughly spent fifty-one percent of our budget. So once again, as things ramp up for the spring, there'll be more jobs that are done. But for this current year, we are under expenses as we speak versus revenues. And then sewer on page fifteen is just gonna be an in and out account. We keep just, we retain just a little bit of the money there. Sorry, page sixteen.
Thanks, Chris. And, and just, uh, as you and I talked about earlier, I, I think that, you know, one of the, for someone who, you know, first budget meeting. You know, the, the big question on my mind and you will lay that concern is just that. There's nothing that is a red flag from a financial point of view concerning the twenty twenty-two budget. And, and we are largely on track with where we would hope we would be at this stage.
Yes.
All right, does anybody have any questions?
Do you have a question?
Thank you. We had a deposit of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. It was from appropriation of fund balance. Thirty-nine ninety.
Yes.
Where did that come from?
So on the appropriation of fund balance on that particular line is indicating that we're taking the money from savings. That's a budgeted amount. We're hoping not to have to dip into the whole two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. But if budget balances this year, that means we will dip into it almost three hundred grand in savings. At the time last year, I think we were about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars in savings at the time council did this budget last year.
What, what, what this means is our fund balance at the end of the year, we can only keep twenty-five percent or less in our savings. So the other money has to be allocated to something to be used or to a capital project. So it has to be transferred out of the fund balance. Otherwise, we're in non-compliance.
Okay, and that is true. What Carrie just said is true. But we should also remember, last year we actually had to transfer that money in order to balance our budget. Which. I, I will say it is only about twenty times. City budgets are not the same for business budget or personal budget. Meaning, we have to set it for a whole year. A lot of times, especially if you think about some of our bigger expenditures this last year, we had no clue how much we were gonna spend on legal expenses. We were guessing. And if you're going to guess, one of the things you try really hard to do is guess conservative. So when it comes to an expenditure, you guess high. When it comes to a revenue, you guess low. Property taxes, we're also very much guessing. We had twenty-plus houses under construction last year. We had no idea which we're gonna finish and which we're going to draw property taxes and which we're not going to finish.
Or which ones because of COVID and job loss or whatever wouldn't you just pay? Because you have a percentage of every year.
So when you're dealing with those uncertainties, what you try really hard to do is you try to, again, with revenues, guess low. With expenditures, guess high. So we knew that we were budgeting two hundred and twenty-seven thousand out of savings. But we felt pretty confident that that wasn't gonna be the reality at the end of the year. That we were going to end up taking out a lot less than that, as long as, you know, all the dominos lined up the way we hoped they would.
So then, like, um, do you move it back? But you can't have too much?
Thank you. That's exactly right. So what you can do, and we, and we do every year, is in June, you have this. Additional meeting where you can do what we call reconciliation. Okay, so anyway, you, you basically have a public meeting where you say, okay. Now that we're at the end of our budget year, here's what we can do. And you, you have a few options. You can move that money back into savings. If you didn't spend it. The other option that you have is to move it into a capital project. So for instance, if we, let's say we had fifty thousand dollars left in the year, we'd say, hey, let's prepay that fire truck that we agreed to buy. And so we can move it over there.
Dedicated funds where.
Those are pretty much your only options. Other than that, you have to essentially zero out your budget.
I just wanted clarification where it came from, so.
Does that address your concern? You have any?
Yeah, no, it was just a question that I had.
Okay, all right, thank you.
agenda, on the flip side, if we don't take money out of savings, we typically put money into savings and that kind of helps us balance out the budget to zero. And so there's a line that probably won't show clicks. We haven't done it for years, but it's line four nine nine zero. So if we were gonna have too much revenue versus expenditures, then we would put some money into the savings account to the end of the year.
But that hardly ever happens.
Hasn't happened in a long time.
Is it typical that there would be a substantial withdrawal from savings in a typical budget year?
It would be nice to balance the budget out without having to dip into savings. We're allowed to carry over a certain amount every year and that savings can continue to build up. But we, we did receive a letter from the, the auditor this year that we had saved too much money. We didn't allocate it properly into different expenses. And so I, one of the things we don't want to do is overcharge the citizens by taxation. And so by, at the end of the year and in June, we will be moving money into the specific savings accounts for fire trucks, for EMS, for snowplows. And those kind of things are getting them off the books this year.
Well, and just what I was also getting at is like, dipping into savings does not mean crisis, right? I mean, it's, it's something that is part of what we planned for.
It helps balance the budget. Two hundred thousand plus is, is significant when we only have half a million dollars in there. But, um, we also don't want to keep taxing everybody out of their houses either.
Right.
So we just have to kind of balance out how much we have in savings versus how much. And in June, July, August of this year, when we finalize all the books, we may have a surplus, we may not, we won't know till, till we get all the bills in.
And then savings can also be used as a rainy day fund. If we had an emergency that we needed to take something out of, unexpectedly, we could use that for that.
Right, and part of this two hundred and seventy-seven thousand carryover included like the city cameras. We never did them last year or the year before. So in that pot of money there, there's ten thousand in the general account and then in the water account, there's twenty-five thousand that are covering some of the expenses that weren't accomplished last year.
Which that's one of the harder parts about this budget is sometimes your projects take time. And you've got this budget cycle that's supposed to run basically July to June. Sometimes your projects, especially road projects, water projects, whatever, take more than that amount of time. So you might, just looking at the balance, you might think, oh, we've got so much money, forget it's spoken for. That money's not there. It is there, but it's not there.
Chris, I've got your question. On the enterprise account, we had two van con expenses allocated there, thirty thousand, fifty-three thousand.
Two, I'm sorry, two what expenses?
Van con.
Van con, yes.
Um, just two big ones and I believe they're, they're roads expenses. And roads and water, but I'm wondering, we had, uh, the water gone. I thought those expenses would have gone there instead of the enterprise account.
I had the same question about that.
So because the road expenses dealt with water, the DDW allowed us to get additional funds and also to be able to run it through their loan. And so we, we were running all through the enterprise account. The money's all being received into the enterprise account and none of it's going into the general account.
So the total was, um, on page fourteen, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars that went to that. But not just part of it. And that came out of the, um. Water. Water maintenance, right? Water system maintenance.
So there's some of the water system maintenance and then there's some comes out of a balance sheet account that we track until year end. When it deals with bonds, especially from the state.
So why? Because we had only allocated, um, you know, forty thousand and we spent one hundred and twenty-three, six, sixty-nine. That's what's my comment was, why didn't that come from the bond or, or from the savings? Why did it come out of that account that only had three thousand in?
So, let me see if I can answer that question. We, when we did, when we did the water project. We had originally budgeted for them to basically lay down a pipe. With however wide a strip. And then just patch that strip and that was it.
And we put in the roads.
During the process of doing that, our roads got so. Ripped up, that just putting the strip was not gonna be sufficient.
Right.
And so we approached the water, uh, group funding source and said, hey, can we use that money to do a complete road over?
Out of water funds.
Out of water funds. So that's why it ended up costing more and it came out of just the water funds rather than having any of the road money. But by doing that, we then were able to do a few more roads than we had originally planned on doing as well.
It just seems like it is not very transparent to have that as water system maintenance going to road repair. Like, that's just my comment. I don't know if that's.
I mean, it's because they ripped up the water.
Right.
That we had to do the road maintenance. And, and this is, this, it's, it's fair enough. I think.
Is that kind of what you're?
I don't think your point's about.
The communication issue, right, is, this is seventy-three thousand dollars. The way I see it attached to Corbett's budget that wasn't budgeted, so it looks like he overspent drastically. And I just, if he did, it's a clerical thing. No, he didn't. But, but I just want the story, right? I want to know, are we telling the correct story to our residents? And this tells the story to me that Corbett's gone way over budget, which I know he didn't. And that's what I'm wanting to understand.
So if you look up at the revenue line, there should be about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars under miscellaneous services revenues. So that's showing the bond payments coming in. Now there was a payment in transit probably that, by the time this report, report was printed, so it only showed one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six, sixty-nine in expenses. So when the mayor and I go through the budget and update it, Corbett's budget on that line, and that's not Corbett's budget, it's your budget, Mr. Mayor. And the city council votes on it, that'll be forty thousand dollars will be brought up and probably four hundred thousand dollars. So once we get that cleared, now because the, the way the water enterprise account is, basically all the expenses are on, are in one category. So as long as that category stays within a hundred percent of allotted budget, we're, we're able to, to not have to worry about opening the budget and making it quick. As far as transparency in the roads, yeah, that's, that's, that, that might be something that we need to look at a little bit more. But as Dave said, it was a result of the tractors driving on fixing the water line that caused the road to be, to be, um, needed to be fully repaired.
I don't know if you guys remember, it was a disaster.
It wasn't. Yeah, it was a disaster, but I, I just think we're gonna explain it to our residents. They're gonna say water system maintenance and they're not gonna associate road, uh, you know, fixing the roads as part of the water system maintenance. So I guess that was where I was having an issue with that.
So your concern is primarily how it's labeled and right? I mean, and would you say that?
The messaging.
Okay.
And I was just wondering why, I, because I thought we were paying for it all out of the bond. And, and that appears to be not happening, not ever. Water projects or the road project, because we did both.
Can we just make a, a line item for some of those things when it becomes a huge expense, just so that we have more transparency?
So what would you recommend? Like a, like under the water maintenance, maybe do like a roads or something or, um?
Yeah, like so.
Something that just says due to water fixing, roads destroyed, hence it's here. Obviously make it sound better and professional, but.
The thing that's, the thing that makes that difficult is when you add a line, you have to maintain that line for three years.
So we can grow it out for two years.
And our, our water projects, I mean, go three years.
But now all of a sudden, you've got a bunch of lines that say, well, we did this once, we did this once, we did this once, we did this once. Now your budget looks really messy.
I would think that though, I mean, messy, but clear.
Yeah.
Than messy because we don't.
But I do think we're, we're doing roads and water for at least three years. I mean, this, we've only done our page one and our money is two.
Continuous. There's always gonna be something, there's always gonna be something over there.
Well, we do have some, another place for road repair that's just general road repair. This is specific to the water maintenance. And then the road repair after water maintenance, which is limited, I hope. But it does show the case to our residents that it is separate from regular road. Because a lot of them are wondering why we're not fixing every pot, why we're not doing this and that's out of. And then if they saw this, they, they saw this is going to roads and they're saying, well, our mine didn't get fixed. Well, this is specifically to the roads that already had the water system update.
Yeah, and, and we don't have to come up with a solution tonight, but your, your point is staying in and Chris and I can get together and certainly.
Let me throw a curve ball on all of this. Often, when we do water projects, we will choose to also do a road project at the same time.
Same time.
And then we will do partial allocations of the project costs. So we'll say thirty percent of that came out of roads, thirty percent of it came out of water, thirty percent of it came out of, I don't know. But we'll, we'll, we'll do partial allocations. So that's another, and I, I, I will admit this. It's a transparency issue because it makes it very difficult when you're looking at the road and you're saying, who paid for that? That's what you want. You want to know who paid for that work. And when it comes out of this pot and this pot and this pot, sometimes it's hard enough. We did that with these trucks that we bought for the snowplows. They were thirty percent out of, uh, snowplow, thirty percent out of water, thirty percent out of roads. So we, we kind of pooled the money from various places. Now, if we were Provo, we would have a water department that would buy their own truck. And we'd have a snowplow department that would buy their own truck and everything would be really clean.
Could we articulate on that line, thirty percent of cost? That would then flag and say, oh, we've now got.
Well, we do, so, so this is looking at kind of your category, um, view, if you want to think of it that way. This is the category view.
Well, I'm actually pulling off.
On the line item, which those are, yes, we do typically actually put thirty percent.
But like right here, we've got, so here's another one. We've got the enterprise fund and the general fund, both at seventy-six ninety-nine for the cameras. Both, obviously.
How much one?
Eight thousand dollar down payment. And it would just be nice if we could, you know.
Should be a line item.
Something that just says, hey, this is fifty percent of said down payment. So that way it helps us tie them together instead of, you know, me spending hours chasing these.
Right. Well, and I found the same thing too is, um, under, right above the last one we were talking about. It, the camera, part of that camera, half of it came out of the sixty-four, forty-five fuel and supplies.
Yeah.
And it doesn't make sense that it came out of fuel and supplies. And then the other half, I asked, where did the other half go, about fifteen? And it comes out of tools and equipment, which underneath says equipment for roads department. So I know that they were doing the cameras for water and fire. And so I'm wondering, why is it coming out of road department here under tools and equipment? And the other half of the fifteen comes out of this that says fuel and supply? Because neither of them seem to be very transparent on where's the money coming from the cameras?
I have the same question. My head's fat.
That's a fair question. Uh, and we can look at the categorization and the identification of them, I think it's, uh, therefore.
Yeah, I mean, there's, we could, we can add as many GL lines as you guys want for a two million dollar budget or we can add as little as you want, whatever's.
Too many, we just, I don't know, if there's just a way to break it out.
I would recommend that we don't necessarily add category lines. Certainly some might be in, in, okay, but that when we do the, the detailed line items, that's where we're more detailed. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Hundred percent. I just want the ability to drill down and be able to see the story. That's what's so important because we're all accountable to our residents. And when they ask us a question and it takes us, you know, four or five hours of digging or having to harass, you know, all of our wonderful staff. You know, I think that's a, that's a tell that our process is broken potentially, or at least something to have a conversation around so that we can make it just continually that much better.
Right, because I would have never guessed that cameras would be in fuel and supply.
And it looks like we overspent in that category when we didn't really.
Right, because it's for the cameras. So I guess it's, I know, Chris, that, that it all balances out when we get to the bottom line, but.
Yeah.
It, it is when people, you know, we've had more and more people watching online, so then they are saying, well, we, we noticed a few months ago, you talked about this. Where is it now that we're doing budget? And so it is harder to sometimes find those little things that we've talked about. You know, where is that line item for cameras? Well, it's not on here, but you dig far enough and it's under tools and fuel.
Yeah. Craig, we need to offer something.
You know, it seems to muddy the water on some of these projects because it's not in the budget. So when it's not in the budget, you have to find the money. It may, the money may be in the budget, but you've got to locate it in different areas. And then that's what it gets spinnled. If it's actually in the budget. There doesn't seem to be that, it's, the, the issue's not there anymore. Because you have it in your equipment and supplies is gonna be my new cameras. And so that, and I don't know how you fix that. I don't know.
Yeah, but I guess just because it was under tool, which is says equipment. But I guess just because it was under tool, which is says equipment for road department and cameras work for roads.
Fair, but, and, and I hear what you're saying. But now, go up to the top level category, what is the top level category of to, fuel and tools and?
Supplies, fuel, materials for roads.
Now, up above that.
Roads and public improvements.
Okay, so that's the other kind of.
Right.
Spin on this is. So you've got your top level category, whatever that is. You can move money around within that top level category without having any kind of public meeting or any kind of budget discussion. The mayor can do that within his spending authority. I don't know if this happened, cause I, I don't know how Chris and Wendy worked this out. But I think that's probably what happened with this one is we decided as a council to spend the money. So they went to the top level category and they said, okay, now where can we get the money for that? And they just looked at those categories without, again, that's what you can do. So like you can't move it within the, you can't move it from one major category to another without a public meeting. That has to be public.
Right.
But within a, a top level category, you can move money around all you want.
But I guess maybe what I'm trying to say too is that when we voted on it, we said, these cameras are for fire and water. And neither of the, neither categories are fire or water.
No, no, it was alterable for roads because it was snow plowing.
Okay.
But still, in fuel and supplies, it's gonna be public.
Yeah, well, and, and I'm gonna let Corbett say, he's gotta comment, and then if it's okay, I think we can move on. I, I think the point is taken and we can look at. Uh, how to manage this and, and, uh, Corbett?
If, I don't know if it's possible, but it'd be easy, I mean, if, if I'm proposing a budget like I did in that draft. I go through that and I itemize where I'm hoping to spend that money or hoping to get funding to do those things. Would it not be better to have one miscellaneous category and if it's something you didn't budget for? Take it out of miscellaneous, then you have an explanation for one category that is everything that we didn't plan for. And it's gonna be a lot easier to, to explain the expenses in one category than the expenses that weren't planned for. In all of the other categories. Just, just put it in one place, then you give one explanation and everything else. All of the other cat, all the other categories are based on what you budgeted for in that category. And miscellaneous just covers what you didn't budget for. It's still in water, so it still doesn't screw up the bottom line. Or the, the overall category, but you still get done what needs to be done. It's gonna be, I would think it'd be a lot easier to explain that. Instead of saying we took that a few more supplies.
Yeah, no, and, and Chris, you, I'm sure had your reasons for categorizing the way that you did, but we didn't look at it and, uh, to see if that's an option.
Yeah, I would just, let me just, again, I'm not trying to dictate how this goes. Right now, all I'm trying to do is give historical context, and then we can choose to do things totally, that, that's fine. But from a historical context, the reason why we've done things the way we have was basically because of the. So fiber was one of those things where all of a sudden, we had a, a, a huge chunk of change. That got put towards fiber and the residents were going, well, where did it come from? Well, the previous mayor had done exactly what you're talking about, kinda had these big categories that were like miscellaneous. And it made it impossible to track where the money came from. Now, the reality is some of it came from refinancing a bond, some of it came from, uh, from leftover money at the end of the year. Um, there were, there were places where money had come from and it was very easy to identify once you dug into it. But, so we tried really hard with the budget, instead of having miscellaneous catchall buckets. That were hard to track, we tried to be a little more, you know, but again, maybe we did it wrong. I'm, I'm, I'm open to that possibility and I'm just saying, that's the history, history.
I don't think we're saying it's wrong, I just think that we're getting approached by citizens. That think that there's a shell game of money being moved around and that it's not transparent and so, you know, we, especially us new ones. Like we promised that we would do our best to make sure that there was more transparency, so that's why we're questioning.
I think that's excellent, that, it really is. We should be transparent, so I have no trouble with that. I just. Wanna, wanna make sure you understand the history of where we, where we've been and if we can find a better place, then great.
Yeah, it's like, we're not trying to be critical.
Oh no, I'm not taking a critical, but you do have to realize that a hundred percent of every line item is uploaded to the state transparency website. And yes, I know Ben, you talked about having to dig through it and stuff, but. Really, there is, there's everything in the financials is up on the transparency website more than, than what you guys get. And you guys get a copy of all the expenses every month with the check approvals and those kinds of things. But a hundred percent of all revenues and expenses are up on the transparency website and people can see. A dollar check or a ten million dollar check and where, when, what account it came out of. So there's a lot of transparency, maybe it's a, it's a like, like somebody said, a communication or maybe even an education thing. This isn't new, that, that we, we get this, we, our budget's up and flow, our budgets get super, super detailed. Then another mayor comes in and says, this is, this is too detailed, let's break it down into categories. So we, we're, the budget's pretty flexible and just how detailed we wanna get. Um, miscellaneous, I, I like the idea of a miscellaneous in the audit sense is a slush fund and is not really looked at as a good thing. Just because it's too slushy. And then how much do we put in?
Right?
Yeah.
And by the way, Chris got the detail two years ago from me. So I was sitting in here, she was two years ago, so I get it.
Well, I'm just, I just wanna make sure things are clear. You know, if I'm looking at it and I have accounting and I was in banking for ten years and if I'm looking at it and going, well, wait, where did this come from? You know?
Yeah, and you've got great experience on retained earnings, GAAP accounting, fund accounting does. It does walk to its own beat and it is, it is significantly different than regular typical accounting. And so as we work through this together. Um, i- if you have these questions, please don't go look them up on your own, don't waste your time. I'll be happy to, just send me a text, I'm happy to point out. What you guys need so you don't have to spend time doing it, that, that's.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, well, if, uh, we're ready to move on, Jody, you're up.
Okay, so I think I, I sent everything to Newt, um, on some of the requests. Of course, I don't control. You know, salaries or benefits or, uh, retirement. The big thing that I did put in the budget was an increase for the council to have training. And I think that is needed to have adequate training to be able to cover at least going to the St. George Conference in a hotel. And then the Salt Lake City, Utah leagues, the cities and town meeting in September. That one, though, I did not put in a hotel for. I figured that would be easy enough to come home and we could save the two hundred plus dollars. Maybe that's wrong now with gas prices, I don't know. Hopefully, uh.
We might have to carpool.
Front runner doesn't go up. No, I took front runner when I went up in September for a day and it was, what, twelve bucks? So.
Does this, uh, does the training budget include trains for you?
Uh, that's under a different line item, that's under administration training. Um, and I did put in enough there that I could go to the, um, Utah municipal clerks association training. Carrie's been after that, um, for a number of years to go to that one in Cedar City each year. And then, um, the Utah leagues, the city and towns ones. A lot of them we can get online, there's a lot of different trainings. I sat in one last week Thursday. It's easy to do and I can kind of do two things at one time, so hopefully you get double for your money then.
With my experience, I have been thinking, you know, are, whether it's Lori or Jody or Corbett, I mean. Craig does a lot of training because of the, with the fire department training already, but. I think some of the issues that come up in our city, whether it's legal issues or, or ground issues. Or any of those other issues, I think we could mitigate some of the loss of our, of our budget. Um, if they were adequately trained and have the resources or the tools to go and find the answers. Um, through those networks that they would find at the trainings. And so to me, I think it is a, a necessary, um. Expense. I know that a lot of, um. I mean, I have never been to a public works conference, but I'm sure they're not just pretty involved. They're probably talking about sewer and water. Fun things like that. Um, but I know the clerks meetings are really important because this year alone, there were. Probably around forty to forty-five bills that, uh, and out of the two hundred that affected local municipalities, about forty of them. Or more, um, affected clerks specifically, especially with regards to elections and things. And if. If she's not e- not able to go to those meetings, where is she supposed to find that information? Looking it up on your own can take away from precious time that we need in the office, so. Spending a couple of days at a conference, I think really would be an, uh, a worthwhile, uh, for us to. Um, you know, to dedicate funds to.
And Carrie is gonna provide us with a synopsis of all the bills that affect either building, I'm assuming too. And so she's got that for us this year, which is great. Appreciate her doing that for us.
I just happen to be a presenter at the clerks association conference every year, so I'm a little biased towards it, but I've been doing it. Four or five years, I guess, and, and so I do a follow-up with all the bills that happen to do with it and I present that to the clerks association. So I was just talking to you about it, that I feel kinda bad when I'm there saying, but my own clerk can't come.
Um, so that's that one, uh, administration books, subscriptions and memberships. Uh, those memberships are Kira memberships. They're also gonna be, I think, the building is, well, right now, they've included. Utah Valley Home Builders Association, um, they've included our memberships into Utah leagues, the cities and towns. So each year we have different membership fees that we have to pay. I don't think those will go up, so I think. Well, Chris did put a little extra in there. So right now it's been Larry Henry.
As assignment from the planning.
As, yeah, as an assignment from the planning commission. I don't know, that's something that Mayor want, wanna look at and see if he wants to sign. Someone from the council to go to that or how he wants to handle that.
There is a former council person that now sits on the planning commission. Oh, awesome. So he has kind of that background.
Just, as a reminder too, they had requested that, that he stay on that committee. So that's the reason why we went ahead and. Continue to assign him to that committee.
Okay.
But we probably should have an alternate, cause I don't know how often, as, you know, he goes to see family and maybe it would be good to have an alternate that goes to those meetings as well. Uh.
I've gone to them for work, that's why I asked.
Okay, well, double duty. Um, our twenty nineteen bond principal, I think, Chris, you explained that well enough. That's just a refinance of our twenty thirteen bond that we took out, uh, when we did the city center. And I think some Woodland Hills projects, right?
Yes.
Um, office supplies and expenses, uh, it covers our weekly fee to Vanguard. Who comes and cleans the building. I don't know if they proposed an increase, um, this year or not. But I think we're paying two fifty a month for them to come do that. Um, that's once a week. It also covers any of our basic office supplies and goes for Corbett as well, or. Cleaning, something, I think we're trying to.
Cleaning and towels.
Cleaning towels, yeah.
I wonder if they'll increase their prices with everything else going up.
They'll probably increase it and increase it for two years, but we'll, we'll see.
Yeah, um, software support, that includes our three sixty-five subscription each year. That each one of you have, um, and then a portion, I think of the Polaris accounting, cause a portion also comes out of water.
Correct.
So this is one of those split category things that Councilmember Pratt was talking about. Um, also any computer support that we can't handle, including maybe the router that we've got now that we need to have put in in order to. Take care of our wifi problem. Um, we might have to put some money or take some money from it in order to fix this system as well.
Question, I used to have a category for books, dues, training, conferences.
And subscriptions.
And it's not, is it covered by that admin category now?
I did not put it included in there. I thought it was gonna be under the proposed community development or building category.
So I don't, I don't see anything for books, dues or subscriptions under, under building, that forty-two forty category.
It's under forty-one forty-one two-ten. Did you, I, I maybe I didn't catch your, uh, proposal.
Yes, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, we put thirty-five in there.
She said that's just administrative, not, no, that's just public works.
Does that include his, like, IRC, IBC books for, cause we're gonna have to do the twenty eighteen, I think that's gonna.
I mean, so, aside of, uh, building code books is almost eight hundred books.
And we have to get it for IRC and IBC and then plumbing, mechanical.
We can break that out. I don't see it in the budget request that Corbett, but we can break that out and put a, put a books and subscription under the building department.
You'll create another category then in that, in that department?
Yeah, but that would reduce this budget from thirty-five hundred dollars, um, down because most of it does go to you and Kira's only like a hundred bucks a year.
Um, and then we just have to remember Utah Valley Home Builders Association, that's three fifty. And unless we put that under building as well, which we could do, which would make logical sense there. And then our Utah leagues, the cities and towns membership.
And then you have a membership in the clerk association.
And then, uh, yeah, UMCA membership. Uh, administration utilities, I did ask for a little bit more there, just because I know that the cost of. Fuel and everything else is going up. We also that in our, um, own personal budgets. We may be able to, depending upon what you approve, we could reduce that by approximately twelve thousand dollars. If you approve the waste oil boiler that's being looked at, so that would have. Either reduce that or you could use that twelve thousand from utilities to possibly pay a mortgage for the addition, just depending. How you wanna do that.
So the, the natural gas is only about seventy-eight hundred bucks, not twelve. So on this one, I did reduce your, your recommendation by about two thousand, Jody.
Okay.
Be five to twenty-three, just off historical, but not sure if the council wants to bump that up. Um, but historical on gas over a twelve-month period is about seven thousand seventy-five hundred bucks.
That's with a trend race? No, we.
That's, that's over the past twelve months.
I went off and anticipated that fuel costs are gonna be a lot higher, just cause, I mean, everything that I see, they're saying that it's gonna be a fifty percent increase.
Yeah, um. Yeah, it's time to, someone had a great idea to put a spreader, a salt spreader behind a bicycle and. We'll send Severn and, uh, John Wallace out and they can.
I wanna see Dave on a bike, spreading something.
That's not gonna happen.
I wanna see that.
I, I would pay for that one. Actually, that might be a moneymaker. Um, administration website, Town Cloud, but do we have in there our bill to, um. City inspect, that every year is a thousand dollars, and I don't know where we've accounted for that.
But she would really like that check, did you get?
I got the invoice today and I'm ready to put it on Lori's desk, so.
So we have four thousand for that.
But I don't know where we're putting the thousand for city inspect. Chris, do you know where we're putting that?
Checking right now. What was the company name on that, you remember?
Uh, my city inspect.
It, it, I think it's city inspect.
So we've got, originally we had twelve hundred dollars under the admin computer and software support for Town Cloud. Now we've broken Town Cloud out into the admin audit, so we have enough in city inspect. In our, um, line forty-one forty-one dot two sixty.
What is an audit? Okay.
Forty-one what? Can you repeat that number?
Two sixty.
Forty-one forty-one dot.
Okay.
Again, Chris, if we can, if there's a way that we can put that into the building budget. Is it gonna just make it much easier to justify the fees that we charge? To cover the expenses of doing building inspection, plan review.
Is that the Town Cloud one specifically?
No, just the city inspect.
So it's the one thousand dollar one that we get at each year.
Okay, I'll make a note of that and.
Uh, next one is administration attorney. I'll leave that one alone.
Now, specifically that one. This is Chris.
That was great, Joyce, I'll leave that one alone.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave that one alone.
This is Ethan and Craig.
This is primarily Ethan and Craig, um.
With a little bit for maybe something else.
Yes, if we, it's just, it's pretty much what we've spent this last year. I will not say that. All of what we spent this last year that so far sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. All of what we spent this last year that so far sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. Um as of when this was printed, went to them, I think, to the. Seventeen South Woodland Hills Drive, I will say though, that probably sixty thousand of it has.
Well, again, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I think it's fair to say. This covers other things, because we've been doing this Summit Creek agreement with Ethan and Craig and it covers their expenses for that, so. And there's there's other, well, consulting with them on.
I don't think this sixty-two thousand, though. I would say a very small percentage of it is gone to that, maybe twenty-five hundred.
So most of it has been about the about the duties and situation.
It's been about the situation at one-one-five South Woodland Hills Drive.
Outside of the lawsuit mostly.
Um Chris, I think David alters is coming from administration professional services, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So the blessing zero are here today.
But we're at, we're done with him, right?
No, we are not, we'll get a couple more bills from him and that's only, we may get more depending if we. Yeah, or they appeal a decision.
Okay, so he has been coming out of a couple of different line items because of the different work he's done. But if we want, we can put it all under other professional services there and just get on one line item.
Well, he's primarily just done, I mean, he's only been involved with the issue at one-one-five South Woodland Hills Drive. We have not used him on anything else.
We'll move his expenses over.
So that twenty-five thousand or plus that we've spent on him probably needs to be moved. Uh capital outlay, equipment, that would allow for a new computer. Um new printer, hopefully we don't have to ever do that, we've got that actually coming out of office supplies and expenses and we're leasing that. Printer from Canon, so hopefully, um but that would allow for any of those things. And then elections, um this year we can take off that twenty-five hundred out of the budget.
And I did that already.
Twenty-five hundred, um cuz we don't have an election year.
We'll put that towards the uh attorney fees. Wait a minute, going back up to three.
Yes, yeah.
We pledged it more.
We did, hopefully. Hopefully, we might have some access there. Now, that will depend if we've tapped out what we were given from the trust on the other two appeals. That are currently with um being covered under the trust, so we're getting close on those.
Attorney could actually go the wrong way, guys.
Yeah, really fast.
Very fast. Um back on the computers and supplies and stuff, we would like to redo a three-year rotation of computers inside the city center, possibly four years. Couple of years ago, we got stuck having replaced.
He would like to do a three-year rotation or four-year rotation on the computers, he said.
And which line item is that?
Now, having said that, didn't we with COVID money just refresh most of the computers?
We refreshed Corbett's and Craig's and then Marcy has a new one.
Okay.
Not all.
We, I think we ended up taking a couple back, remind me, Jody, if we did, because somebody, uh we'd we'd purchased laptops that just were not gonna be.
We couldn't return them. So if I could return this system, I might return that right now, so.
Yeah, we just didn't wanna get stuck again with a one-year, you know, six thousand dollars for replacing computers and stuff.
No, I I agree, I think they should be on a four-year rotation cycle. Every four years, we should replace the computers, and it would be ideal if we didn't do them all in the same year.
That would come out of. Two sixty, computer software support.
No, um forty-one, forty-one, seven forty.
Admin capital outlay, okay, that would be for computer replacement.
And probably the first one we'd want to do is Lori's desktop. Um that's got the majority of uh residents' information on and things like that, and that's probably the one we wanna. Yeah, so. Um planning and zoning, Wayne has graciously, over how many years? Never taken a salary. I have questions on those zeros, I saw those. And he does the minutes and does everything um.
Each with us every week.
Yeah. He's in here constantly, I know he won't take a salary, but if anything. Were to happen to him, I don't think we're gonna find someone who is so generous. And we shouldn't expect them to be as generous. He needs at least a dinner out with his wife to a nice restaurant. You know, something besides a pen would probably be nice and a piece of paper.
And to your, to your point, um we should still budget whether he takes it or not, because if anything happened, you got called on a mission, broke your leg, whatever. The case may be, and we needed to have someone step into that position they might not be able to, but it shouldn't be. That you're you're asked to serve in our city with in that capacity. Without some compensation, because it is, and a hundred dollars isn't too much, but at least it's something, because it is a lot of time.
I don't think it adequately even covers the phone calls he gets during the month on. Subdivision questions or building questions or.
Have you read his emails?
Yeah.
You know how much time he spends?
I know.
It it's um.
So I think we should still budget it in.
We've gotta do something to make it right.
Compensate you in another way.
Just the love of the work is compensation. Working, working, working with the staff.
He's being very kind, but.
I don't think we uh we consult with Wayne on this, I think we just make a decision that he has to live with her.
So I just would like to propose that we put it back in the budget, at least something to cover them um. I don't know what we'd do without.
I agree. I'm not here that much, but every time I'm here, it's here, so.
Every time I'm here, he's here, so and you know, our volunteers are uh. You know, we really appreciate them, between Newt and Mike and the time they give in the planning commission members, I've gotten a really. Great appreciation over those last two years for the the time that they gave with COVID, cuz I've had more time to work with them and. They do a lot for our community.
We send everything to them first.
Right, so they're great, and that's it, perfect.
If anybody had any questions for Julie, thanks for seeing.
I had some questions on um, I don't know if it's Jody's question more than it is maybe Chris's question. I had asked, because there were several categories with um. I'm trying to think of the words, cuz I've been reading this so much, but with the salaries. So I asked to have that general ledger for our salaries printed out, the gross pay, social security, Medicare and 401K. And so I see that that, so I have some questions with regards to that, just where everything's going. Um let me get back to in order of how I wanna talk about it, but uh. I was wondering on the parks salaries wages, it says gross pay, retirement, five oh, five oh one K. Four oh one Camden, um so we don't have a breakdown of employees on this one, but I think it's just Michael and Craig, right?
Yes.
So all the four oh one K and retirement is through is Craig's, because. Michael only works twenty hours or less, and I know noticed from another, your notes that. Anyone who works is a part-time twenty hours or less doesn't have those benefits, is that correct?
Correct, and going through the numbers here, a little bit more is getting categorized to the parks. And also, I think you build the ordinance officers, four oh one case, that's a programming thing that I've been working with the programmers on to get those leveled out more.
Oh, so Craig's part with with enforcement is in this section.
No, so so like like Corbett can have salaries come out of three or four categories, Jody's comes out of one, mine comes out of one, treasure comes out of one. Craig's comes out of about five because of fire ordinance and those kind of things. But in looking at the way the computer's calculating the retirement, it looks like it's a little bit more heavy on the parks side and the ordinance enforcement side. Then it should be into the roads or water, so we're working on that.
Okay, cuz I just wanna, I know that from state statute, if they work for our time, the hours, the benefits, the four oh one K. Um I just don't want us to get deemed if any of this retirement is going to a seasonal worker. Or if he was working, if he's a seasonal worker, working more than twenty hours. Then we need to be careful that we are paying into it if we're, cuz we're supposed to, but if he's not, then I wanna make sure that we're. We're right on that one.
That's a good point to bring up, I think we need to to look at that a little bit closer, Michael does work sometimes twenty-one, sometimes eighteen, sometimes thirty. Just depends what's going on, um and we did have an audit a couple of years ago where URS, they come in about every three years, an audit and and they did find challenges with. Um the treasurer, the recorder, there's some that that I wasn't getting. Um so they they came and gave us an audit, an audit finding, we've corrected everything, they gave us terms to pay everything back up. Which we're working on right now, but you're right, we don't wanna get slammed again, Carrie.
I think that was our twenty eighteen audit, if I remember, so then the other one is Jody, Chris and Marcy. Marcy's scheduled for twenty-four, but she really, really works about twenty, so I wanna make sure that we're at, but we doing that, but I don't wanna get deemed there. And then um.
So just so you know, they were promised when they were hired twenty-four hours a week, so there is a little bit of Utah retirement systems being paid for Lori and for Marcy.
Okay, um then the other one I had was. Um so Lori is getting some retirement, we're not getting deemed for her. Her consistent twenty-four hours, we're we're not getting deemed for non-compliance, she's included.
Correct.
Okay, and then of course, Cor- Corbett has his, on that retirement line of seven-three twenty-twenty-one. That first one under sixty-one fifty, there was quite a large one that went out, was that Patty?
I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Uh pitch to uh the general ledger uh for fifty-one hundred parts, it says retirement sixty-one fifty.
Sorry, I'm just getting there.
I was thinking that might be for Patty, but I just wanted to clarify.
So so retirement is gonna be lopsided for the next couple of years because of the audit and we're paying back.
Oh, if we're paying back, yes.
Yeah, they didn't make us pay everything up.
Okay, let me see if there's anything else, so we only have the two main seasonal employees. Mike and Zach, and then sometimes we have a a few others, so they're.
We have no, we have no seasonal employees.
Okay.
But they're all, they're all year round.
And then on the ones that are fire EMS, um.
Those are considered seasonal.
See, they're they're considered seasonal, but all of this, social security, Medicare, four oh one K, that's that's not for all of the volunteers, that's Craig and Rachel, right?
Yes.
Okay, as EMS captain.
Yes.
And those bigger allotments on both of those are for their training bonuses, right?
Correct.
Okay, and I just, so I just wanted to make sure that I had it straight, cuz it doesn't always say who's going, what's going to do. And I just remembered from our twenty eighteen that we got deemed and I don't wanna find ourselves in the same spot again.
Yep.
Thanks for that careful attention, Carrie. All right, uh any other questions for Jody or?
I I said no, hers was pretty straightforward, there wasn't any.
All right, Corbett, I think you're next, right?
Yep, so the building in that forty-two forty category, that's a new category.
Actually, Corbett, you're not nice, Craig is nice.
I think it is, Corbett, just for a little quick, though, that minute just to Craig, then to the back.
Yeah, on two nine, public safety chief manager. So what line are we going to, Craig?
Mine will be short.
Which line are we going to for you?
So I turned in mine, fire, EMS, parks and trails. We can go through the fire real quick, um fire didn't change a lot this year. Uh my fire wages, I I think they're gonna end up, we dropped them a little bit, because. I lost a couple of uh trained firefighters that got the bonuses.
Yeah, you give us that face.
Now, I'm hoping to gain gain some back. You know, like right now, we have a new EMT that uh maybe joined the force, so anyways, so but it'll drop a little bit, just because they haven't. Been here as long as they're not trained at the higher level, um so so that should go down, benefits in retirement.
So that benefit, I mean, that bonus I was talking about earlier on that line, it's based on whatever. Um training and certification they've gotten during that year will indicate how much they get.
And it and and we only, we only bonus to the level in which we respond. So we respond um at a basic level, so we don't do paramedics.
Oh, yeah.
Um where we did before, but we can't, we can't operate at that level, so there's no reason to bonus it at a paramedic level. But for your fire one, fire two, you got ADO, so that they got their proper certification, very valuable to the city. Uh so we make it, they don't get paid to go to these trainings, so we make it so they get a little bit of the bonus at the end of the year and. Um and it helps them out. The uh. Go down the benefits retirement, turning, so training this year, um I backed it back then, I backed it down to ten thousand from twelve thousand. Training is very important for us, because of the the few calls that we get, we have to train. And it costs money to train, um it's it's just the nature of the beast and. You know, even this year, I was looking at that my fuel operation costs, I mean, I'm right now, I'm about two grand and. That's in the first half of the year, so you figure the second half, it could be four grand, because the fuel's almost doubled. Uh that'll hit us, uh taxes stay the same, but the fuel's more, so. And and we don't pay fuel tax, just so you guys know, we get a, yeah. I know, but we got, we, Chris set those cards up for us, so uh trainees, trainees a big deal for us. Um my maintenance, equipment and supplies, I kept this the same. Um I've got, I've got some things coming up that are gonna have to be replaced due to expirations. One of them is my SCBA's, so we went in and we upgraded about. About three years ago, I upgraded to N F P A twenty eighteen, they call it, which would have put us good for ten years.
Great, can I, you gotta down it down.
Yeah, well, it's it's our breathing apparatus, so we have the breathing apparatus. Uh it N F P A twenty eighteen is a standard level at which you should be as a department, that. It makes it so we're not liable if something gets hurt. We upgraded to this for a reasonable fee through Honeywell, because it was a recall on our old packs. For about ten thousand dollars, I upgraded to all-new packs. But now Honeywell went out of business and they no longer make the bottles, and my bottles are getting ready to expire. So I'm I'm gonna try to go for a grant for that one. They're they're aware of the situation, the grant people, and if I can get the grant, that'd be great. I mean, because right now I've got ten units and I'm probably looking at about four grand a piece, so. If if I don't have to, if I don't have to buy that, and and they're being sympathetic with departments that did Honeywell. Because our intentions were great, we updated the packs, we spent the money to do that. And and now we get stung because. They don't make the bottle anymore, they got out of the business and other bottles will fit, but it puts us at a liable level. They tell you, you have to use the same manufacturer bottle for the same pack, it's, I don't know, it's probably just a CYA. Type of thing, but so that's coming up, I've got my helmets, they're all due. Things like that, I've been working on my turnouts, been buying them, because they're after ten years. Things like that. I've been working on my turnouts, been buying them because they're, after ten years, they're expired. I'm looking right now, they're around twelve to fourteen years. So we felt like we could have gone a little bit longer than the ten, but it still puts us liable. If somebody goes in a fire and the rest, their turnouts don't protect them, it, it puts us.
So one, one question on that then. So like other things that we've worked, we've been trying to do is have these. Um, depreciation funds, Chris, can we have that for just fire equipment, so that there's always an ongoing. Um, capital for that, so that we're not putting out the full amount every budget cycle?
So right now, the council just decided, the previous council's just to put it in savings. And utilize it for the down payment and retrofitting or fitting the new truck that's coming in July, potentially July twenty twenty-three. So right now, there's fifty thousand, um, there'll be another fifty thousand this year and the fifty thousand next year, so it'll be about a hundred fifty thousand by the time that truck's ready.
Just for the truck though, but what, like what Craig's saying, you know, things age out and he has to replace bottles and he has to replace all of these things on a consistent ten, five to ten year basis, so.
We've just kind of counted on, sometimes it's counted on grants, like I just, I got ten thousand this year toward radios, so wildland radios. Um, which helped us a ton. I had to spend about twenty-five hundred. But I got six brand-new radios now, we're, now we're, we're okay, we're compliant and. That's the way we've done it. We've rolled through my equipment and I just, I just continually updated as we go. Try to stay ahead of it, so I'm not coming in here asking one year for a hundred thousand dollars for new equipment.
Right, because that's the thing that makes it different is that you have to be in compliance.
But if we wanted to age amount, I mean, at ten years, you could do a, a capital, even if we paid for half of it, at the end of the ten years. If, if the money's sitting there, I mean, that would be a bonus. Uh, there's no, I mean, that's, that's a good thought. Um, discretionary spending, uh, this is just kind of, you know, kind of all over the board. I don't. I don't have my year to date, but, um. One of the things I typically do here is we'll go to dinner when we go to one of our fire school.
Or, or meet with the chicken.
Yeah, or if I, if I meet with some of the chiefs, um, or division of natural resources, I, I may buy, buy lunch. Um, so if, if you look at, if we have chiefs meetings, we meet, and these guys are volunteers, we'll usually meet over lunch. But, so that's my discretionary telephone notification system, we bumped it up a little bit this year. Because I think the rates will go up. If they don't, we'll just stay status quo, but I think they will. Uh, they've talked about redoing it because it's costing them a fortune. I just had the chief meeting the other day, if you add a new station, it costs dispatch thirty grand. To cover that one station. And you look at American Fork right now is building two. And there are stations all over the county going up and it's, and that's not money that the station pays, they absorb. The thirty, thirty thousand into operational, so. So you're.
We have to pay more for American Fork to have.
Everybody gets to pay a little.
Even though we don't get a station.
Wow.
And ours went up this year, so.
Right, obviously, if they're going up all over the place and we're not there, then you.
Yeah, Craig, Chris, what was it? We went from eight something to nine something?
Yes, let me grab that here, but, but Ben was at a meeting and sent me a text that he already got the fees for next year. And it is.
Oh, yeah, I saw that someplace when I was reading. Yeah, that's kind of rough that we have to help that cost.
Well, and, but if you think about it, if we were to say we built a new station or if somebody came on board, it'd be thirty thousand dollars, they would have to.
We'd be grateful to have it spread out.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Buying, building a new one.
And not only that.
They'll be able to transfer that equipment over into the new one, so we won't have to incur them thirty grand there, so.
But if you looked at what happened there in our twenty eighteen fire, I mean, them guys didn't hesitate, we got our, we got our money back tenfold and. I got hazmat at a Provo, if I have a big spill up there, we can bring hazmat in and.
I have a gift for you, talking about hazmat, let me read to you what it is. I'm gonna pick it up.
I'm allowed to say, yes.
Well, just, just to say, it is a, it is a, um. It is a donation slash gift and. Yes, hazmat suits. I was asked if we could use, uh, some boxes of disposable hazmat coveralls. T-Vex style hooded with front zipper elastic waist ankles and hoods. And I said, and they were ma- manufactured by State Fit, and there's all the pro, all the stuff that it says, product name. All, everything, each box has twenty-five suits, I asked for several boxes. Cause I figured we could have them on hand. Someone had some extras.
Well, if you see people with hazmat suits. Get the other way.
Well, I figured, just, well, I figured that we wouldn't have the money to buy them, but if we had a chemical spill or something like that. That occurred, because we do have a lot, a lot of big rigs coming up this way and, and I, I think.
I love the, I love the snowplow drivers use it to wash the trucks.
But I figured it would be good for us to have them on hand, because I knew that they're expensive and we can't afford them. But we never know what's gonna be coming on eleven two hundred, or because we are interlocal, have interlocal agreements. And with all of the building that may be happening here or nearby with big trucks and equipment, we might have.
Well, this will be something good to put on the emergency management, uh, list of items that we can provide to other cities. Is if you could, if you put down fifty hazmat suits, operational suits, that's a big deal. Because if they do, they just had a chlorine, possible chlorine leak a couple of weeks ago in Springville.
Right.
Uh, ended up not being a leak, but that had been devastating, so, um, they're out there, but now we'll, uh. We'll just, we'll definitely put them out for, to where the county knows that we have them and we can, we can help, and if we need them. We can certainly do it. Well, thanks. You, you got a question?
Well, go ahead first.
Capital outlay, Chris already touched on this, this is, this will be toward the truck. We're supposed to go back in September. October for the pre-build meeting, um, and then we'll see it in the following budget year. Twenty-three, twenty-four, so it'll give us the option of putting a hundred and fifty down. Uh, at that time, we'll see what the rates are for everything. And that'll depend on what we put down and, and how we do that versus buying equipment, uh, to fit the truck and, and all that. So.
Can you back up, Craig? There's a thousand dollars expense for fire grant expenditures, and we didn't budget anything, is that it?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, that's money coming in that is going out of this. If I'm counting on it coming in and it's going out of this, it won't be, I mean, I'm hoping to get grants each year, but I. I just, I put in for a five thousand dollar grant for some turnouts. I think I'll know in April.
Grant for emergency management that I'll find out about tomorrow. I don't know how much it is, but I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Put out for that.
Well, and that's a new line item and within the fire, we taught, made that as best place for was, uh, emergency manager. Carrie's our emergency manager now. Um, it's getting pretty involved, uh, with the emergency manager, it's a great thing that they're doing. And this networking that's going on, if we have an event. I mean, they, we know all the other emergency managers, and that's because Carrie spends the time and goes to these meetings. Uh, puts them in there for some training, uh, with one down in St. George, uh, for emergency management and. You know, even if it's, even if it's networking and learning best practices and putting a plan together. I mean, that, that's what'll get people here.
And I'm hoping to get, uh, the county on board because we're supposed to have five plans written. And, um, Salem just did one plan and it was twenty thou, almost twenty thousand dollars for one plan. Of course, we can't budget for any plans, and so, um. And so I have asked the county for some money, and I asked the state for money, and the state said county has enough money for all of it. So the sheriff and I are going back with Peter Quittner to the county to see if we can get that money allocated, not just to our city, but to our county. To help us have the resources to write our plans that are written by professional emergency managers. And then whoever has that, because we don't know who will be the emergency manager in years to come, but it's a state, uh, statute that every city have one. And so I, I'm trying to do my best to build the foundation right in our city so that we have connections and we have the funding. And so.
Are we able to retrofit other cities to us?
Right.
Are we able to retrofit other cities' plans?
Um, well, Salem did that, so it was still twenty, no, Salem, Salem used another city's plan, and to get it to their plan, it was twenty thousand. Now, um, Salt Lake City just put their plan together, they spent a million dollars on it. And they have offered it if we get the funding from our county to utilize that million-dollar plan that they could use and then. Specifically retrofit it to each city, because obviously ours won't be the same, but there's certain things. That by federal standards have to be in your plans, so there's certain things that have to be there and then other things that it just is very complicated. To make sure that you're in compliance statewide and federal-wise, so.
So that's coming up this budget here then, for us to do this, is that?
Well, this is part of, part of what's happening, so we only put in there enough to go do some trainings and, and some other things like that right now. In hopes that we can, um, get the money from the county so that we can utilize and maybe get our plans written for free. Over the next three years, it's a three-year pilot program.
Okay.
That's my goal, and then I am also putting in for a separate grant that could maybe pay for a few extra things that we might need. As we determine what's needed in our plan. We don't know what we don't know on sometimes.
Now, Craig, I love your trainings, and you guys are doing like mockups or things of that nature.
Yeah, we've been doing quite a few mocks.
Is, do you drag Carrie along with you?
Do we what?
Do you drag Carrie along with you?
Um, no.
We're gonna try to coordinate that a bit better.
Cause, so that's why they don't, that's why they don't want, they don't want the fire chief is not allowed to be the emergency manager. They've had that in the past, to where either the police chief or the fire chief, that he's, I'm gonna be busy in operations. She's gonna be very in support.
Know what you guys know, so she can actually fulfill that role if we get to that.
Well, and, and hers is in logistics, getting equipment here, getting food. Getting the residents out of the city, so there's probably a little bit of overlap. Um, uh, more happy to, you can come to the mocks, but.
Yeah, and we're, that's part of the, the money that I'm asking for in this grant is to do some more of the mock training, the tabletop. Type mock things that will come in together and we figure out a few things, just because once you can go through it. And then, um, some of the stuff that the fire department does, um, is really into fire, but there's also a lot of other things that, that could possibly be. So Craig and I have been talking.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, that's a good idea though. Uh, then I put eighteen hundred dollars back in for the annual appreciation dinner. Um, which we just held and. I think that's in a, that's in a very important dinner to hold for a department. Ben, any questions, any more questions on fire? Uh, move down to eight.
Maybe, maybe this isn't the time, I, this is the first time I've ever been to that appreciation dinner, and it was very well done. The whole evening was very nice. You know, as I, as I sat there, I thought, and I don't know how far and wide the invitations went. Uh, but there's a lot of volunteer people in the, in our midst that work for the city. I know a lot of them are firefighters too, that have snowplow drivers and so forth. But it might be nice in the future to consider a citywide. Dinner for city volunteers and fire, I don't know if the fire department will wanna give that up and, and, and maybe. Uh, spread it around more rather than just firefighters, but I think something that you all ought to consider. In the future of doing that and maybe adding to that budget and making it a kind of a city, more of a city-wide instead of just the fire department, just a fire.
We have two really big volunteers sitting in our midst that spend a lot of time and, and I know that in my committees, we have volunteers who spend a lot of time. And it would be nice if we could maybe expand appreciation to, to all of the volunteers.
We need to do an appreciation program for the volunteers.
I, and I suggested to Carrie, maybe in our newsletter, that we do a little volunteer spotlight for different people and then have somewhere where. If people know of somebody, because we don't want people to feel slighted either, I mean, you have to be careful for that, but where they could suggest and like submit names if they know.
But, yeah, have it highlighted, but then also like Wayne said, maybe a, a bigger dinner that we could, um, you know, make sure to highlight. And people words up to several different people. We used to do a volunteer of the year at Woodland Hills Day, but it was really hard to just take one. Because we did, I mean, we had so many different people who volunteered in, in a lot of different categories. And so I think it would be maybe nice to, to, to do something more.
Between Craig and I, we can crank up blacks pretty quick.
Yeah.
One thing my wife thought was, I wonder, and I don't wanna step on your toes here, Craig, but she said it might have been. Meant maybe more or less, I don't know, but I love to dump stuff on the mayor. Um, if he ran that, you know, so it was coming from the mayor and the council. Our appreciation to the, the, the fire EMS versus the fire EMS, appreciating the fire EMS.
Although it was awesome.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm ready to give it up.
Well, I wonder if it.
Sorry.
I loved it. For me, there was a lot of history that I didn't know and I really appreciated it.
See, and that's just it, it's, it's no different than me not showing, I didn't wanna show Devona Allred. I didn't wanna introduce Devona Allred. I know her kind of. Beth was the one that needed to introduce Devona Allred, so there are situations where I'm not the person.
You know, that, I'm just thinking from the overall, like if he opened it, just so it came from city, showing our appreciation versus just the department. Right? So broaden the appreciation umbrella a little bit, so.
Yeah.
But that's probably a different conversation.
Yeah, I might give it up. You know, there's, it, the thing about the dinner is, is not, I feel like I don't show appreciation enough to my guys. Through the year. I mean, I asked a lot of them and I'm, I'm hard on them and that's the time that I get to get up there. I, yeah, so whatever you guys call it, my soul, whatever, so.
And I think Wayne's point is also really good. So however, that ends up shaking out, but, uh, something that, uh, we absolutely appreciate your guys' contribution. Your guys' and those contributions, um, but also.
That's funny, well said.
Um, moving on to EMS, so the top part, wages. Uh, then of course the benefits, training, I bumped up a little bit. Um, so what this'll do is, this'll send eight of our EMTs to conference, uh, that they hold up in Provo. And we, we just drive back and forth each day, go spend all day up there and they've got some great trainings. And most of them are from paramedics or doctors right here in Utah County. Um, so some of the training, I mean, they've really gotten into some advanced. CPR stuff lately and, uh, some, some of the new drugs that are out on the street are messing, messing people up pretty bad, but. Uh, and this allows also for two new EMTs each year. We pay about nine hundred dollars to send an EMT to training.
I have a question on that. I, I had a meeting with the sheriff this morning, we were talking about, um, more and more drugs are coming into our county. And whether or not they're making it to Woodland Hills or not, but one of the things that he said is, if they've really been, um, fearful of. Is fentanyl, and one, uh, one of the officers recently, um, you know, had some dust, uh, criminal blew the dust into the face. Um you know, had some dust, uh criminal blew the dust into the face, which could kill you. They had to rush him to the hospital, get Narcan, so he survived, but if he wouldn't have been close to a hospital, he would have died and. And how that is, if you come to a scene as a first responder and someone's doing drugs or whatever and they. You got that on you, that would, that could potentially kill our our um first responders. And I'm just wondering, in in their trainings, are they dealing with this kind of new threat?
I mean, fentanyl is a scary thing.
I mean, just the size, he was telling me the size of a of a grain of salt could send you to the hospital.
No, yeah, it's a pretty scary stuff.
Blowing whole handfuls onto officers and first responders.
Well, they're starting to put it in cocaine now and. Uh you know, so they're they're seeing deaths and overdoses and. Yeah, it's scary stuff, so we, but they do train us on all that, they train us on the latest, they'll usually take a. Uh M C I, which is a multi casualty incident, they go over that in fairly good detail. Cause most of that, most of that's gonna be multi-agency. You know, we just did that active shooter training at the hospital last month. And that was really good to be able to work with Pace and P D and Pace and EMS and Salem P D and Salem EMS. So the training, once again, the training is um. Is important for these guys and it's medical, for some reason, medical you have to pay for. Fire, most of the classes are free. Yeah, I I don't, that ours comes from U F F, which has their own line item for training and. I mean, all those trailers are available to us, it's just uh. It's it's just, it's a good thing. Uh next one is supplies, we put in for an increase because we know that the cost is is gonna jump this this year. Just gloves alone have just skyrocketed, it's crazy.
Anything that's got petroleum prop.
Oh yeah. Yeah. EMS appreciation, uh this is for something that they may do for for one of the EMS, whether it's. That and then, then the only thing that they did add this year um is I don't think it's on the line item here is that. They put ten thousand dollar in for capital outlay, but um it's not in there, it just. We started one, we we'd like to start getting something in capital outlet for EMS. We've always been able to buy used ambulances and I think our last one cost us maybe around nine grand. Something like that, eighty seven hundred, I think. What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Payson was was good enough, so. Yeah, and it's it's doing well, but there will come a time when it's no longer dependable and. You know, we can take our other stuff on medical, it's just not quite as well equipped. So any any questions on EMS at all?
I have a question, can I ask, does Rachel participate in that?
Rachel, Rachel will run this, EMS is under fire, but she will run her own budget. Uh but she talks to me a lot, I mean, she talks about purchase and stuff and. Um so, but yeah, basically, I asked her to put this together and she did. And 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 these were the reasons for the number, so. Uh parks and trails, um I met with Janet and we went over, we went over some needs for for parks and trails. In the last couple of years, all I've had in there was maintenance, fees to go mow the grass, fix some sprinklers, that kinda stuff. And then, yeah, last year, we also had the ten thousand award of those days in there. But to start out with, uh wages, we we kept the same. Um benefits, repairs and improvements, so this is something that. They'd like to start adding some things to the park. And having the funds to do so, and the Parks and Trails Committee has been good about meeting, taking the time, coming up with ideas. And. Yeah, and they don't have any money to do anything and we always, I I know a while ago, we we did, we used to have. I thought it was around four thousand dollars or something in the budget for improvements in the park. And we really never did anything, but we didn't have a Parks and Trails committee, so. Yeah, then we have the opposite problem, we have somebody that wants to form and I I mean, I think there's some things that they could do, I talked to Cora. There's some things that they can do to to get to get things into the park, but if we could give them some funds to. Maybe work with at least and.
So is this repairs and improvements or is this um?
It's repairs, improvements, that that line item, it it covers everything, so um.
There's only.
Yeah, that, so the fifteen hundred, what we did is we raised it five thousand, the fifteen hundred was still for fixing sprinklers. Valves, whatever, um and then we added a five thousand dollars on. On some improvements, they're talking about in the basketball court, maybe eventually a restroom.
Wonder who's pushing the basketball court.
It's the mayor.
I know, it wasn't the short people.
Is this an area where we would fund the parking at the forest?
Yes.
Well, this could help do that, I mean, that is.
We're also working on grants.
Okay. Yeah.
For the basketball court or they want pickleball, but that might, pickleball might be part of the longer range.
There are some grants available and also I I was talking to some other cities on what they do, you know, the ones especially who. Have a lot of parks, trails, equipment, et cetera. They did say that, and I I talked to you a little bit about it, that they have put on the ballot. So it's not a a decision made by the council, but decision made on the voters if they want a Parks and Trail dedicated. Tax to that, you know, it's a. Yeah, rap tax and so um citizens vote for that and if they like that. Do so that's dedicated every year just to that and nothing else, then it doesn't come out of the general fund.
But if I understood it correctly, it's actually a portion of the sales tax.
Um well, it can just be an added, it can just, I mean, cause we don't really have a sales tax.
Saying, I think it's the disconnect, cause I think, I think the rap tax, if I understood it correctly.
A portion of the sales taxes will have.
It was like a quarter of a percent on the sales tax that a city could implement and then that money was targeted towards. Um recreation and arts and parks, so that's what RAP stands for. So where we don't have sales tax, I don't know that rap tax would even help us.
Although we're getting more with our Amazon sales, we are getting quite quite a bit of revenue off of our. Uh I know. I know, if we could just have our own cardboard recycling center right here, we could make some money off of the boxes. But um but I I don't know, but that's just an idea that we might wanna look forward to. Because right now it's just coming out of our general fund and it might be um better if we had a dedicated fund. So people, cause I've had people who have said, I'm, they're worried, they're okay with parks and trails, they don't have anything against them. But if it comes between snow plowing and roads and a basketball court, there's necessities and wants. And so if it doesn't come out of our general fund, they're more likely to say, oh, there's money dedicated here. And it also then gives parks and trails the ability to say, this is how much we're getting, what should we do?
Well, if there's a basketball court, it could be grant funds.
Right, but we still have to have a match for all grants and we have to have the money to maintain anything that comes into the city. And that does add up.
That's that too is what some of this money could be for, I mean, they they wouldn't be afraid to go for a grant.
Right.
So they went for a three thousand dollar grant, had to come up fifteen hundred, they have it, they don't have to come.
Yeah.
To us to proceed, you know, Greg kinda got in the middle of that when he went for that fence grant for for a little bit and he ended up paying it.
Right, but we also don't, we, isn't it about time we uh resurface the trail? But I mean, that was put in six or seven years ago, wasn't it?
It looks great.
Yeah. It looks okay, but um but you know, those are the kinds of things on maintenance that we don't wanna wait till it's a hazard and a liability. That we have some consistency in things.
Well, and all the switchbacks, they want maintenance for the water bars and uh they'd like to put a couple benches and I I did um. I think we're gonna have Sherri, Sherri's gonna probably do one of them. So I talked to her about that, she she wants to do.
But I just think that the citizens want that and you know, I know some have said, oh, it's a problem for Woodland Hills Day. When our 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 budget is basically about just about six dollars a person in the city for two day events. So three dollars each day is pretty reasonable for all that we give them and um I think that's an adequate budget.
So I did check, it is strictly on sales tax.
Tenth of a percent, so how much would that be for us, Chris, if we?
Six dollars and fifty cents.
Been getting quite an increase in sales tax.
Hope it's been good to us because of Amazon and Walmart and everything like that, so.
Right, and I did um talk with. Um who was it at this date about the idea of getting the tax for the cars? And they said, yes, you should be able to do that, I said, well, I'm going to investigate that further.
That's not our.
Um but they're, that they, at the state level, they said that it can be. Um but there is some some things that they're trying to put in place at the state level that then would allow it here.
Yeah, there's there there's a, there's a canyon between what the state thinks and what the dealers think.
Yeah.
And there's no bridge over that.
There there's no, we'll find out, we'll find out.
Woodland Hills Days, uh we had the same, we just moved the ten thousand forward. And it sounds like Janet also has some ideas, maybe fishing grant money again or.
And and we had a possible donor, so that's.
Yeah, that's right, we did have a donate, we got a guy that's willing to donate some some money, so. So that'll help, uh discretionary spending, put two hundred. If you guys would allow it, I sure would like to let the Parks and Trails Committee. Hat manage that two hundred dollars if they wanna do an activity at the park with donuts or. Then they're not having to come to me to ask for for.
This Christmas thing is where they.
Christmas lights, yeah, she had to do some lights or she had to get some gas to get that traded.
Well, what what do you mean by that, because um. Like the two hundred dollar, if it's budgeted, then. I guess, I guess I'm looking more at the paperwork standpoint, so they might spend it and then submit it for reimbursement to the office staff. Something, is that what you're?
Yeah. Yeah, it it gives them the ability, she called me one day last year and and left a message, I wasn't working. But she left a message, she was trying to get some Christmas lights, instead of just going down and buying a string of Christmas lights. She was trying to hunt me down and so if we just said, hey, you got, you know, your committee has two hundred dollars to spend. On discretionary spending, they can, I think they'll manage it wisely.
On December twenty sixth.
I don't mind signing off on it if I need to, but um anyway, I think it'll. I think it'll help.
So Craig, just one thing to add to that, Halloween, what they did at Halloween cost eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifteen cents, just just for FYI. Whatever they did up there was not in attendance, but.
Yeah.
Trick or treat, paper goods, donuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a nice event.
Budget was very expensive.
Then we put, I I I moved my chipping from twenty that I needed for a grant last year. Cause that twenty covered last year's and this year's, this friendship, I've covered for half this year, but I won't be covered. I mean, unless they do it for nothing, which I'm just afraid that they're not going to. I just, I cut it half uh for next year and if I end up doing some more dumpsters. The dumpsters were popular again this year, helped out, especially in the fall. People used, people filled them up, the only thing we were invested in was snow, so, which was okay. And then we had a thousand dollars in capital outlay. I think that's what we had last year, so we just, we kept it the same and. Any questions on parks and trails? All right, thanks you guys.
All right, welcome back.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I don't, it doesn't look like I'm working off the safety you guys are working on, but I've got on the bottom of page three, building. Forty-two forty. Yeah. And then you turn the page and the building stuff is in forty-four minutes.
That's what I have in mind says now.
Yeah.
Well, Chris and I was you and then them and then you, right?
Right, that's, yeah, whatever. Um Chris is working on, on trying to get that into one category, it's all the same and so whatever, whatever it ends up being. You know, so what I tried to do in those, in these categories was estimate off of twenty home builds. At the average price that we're generating revenue right now. I don't know that it really matters as long as the revenue. Matches the expenses associated with that revenue.
It was just a passion, how many do we anticipate? Cause I was talking with someone from Eagle Mountain the other day, they're getting a new building permit every thirty minutes. I know, but I see this, as the growth comes, I wonder how much, how much more will happen down this way?
Well, Janet, what are you seeing?
It's slowing down, um with the threat of interest rates going up, it's pricing people out of. It's just slowing down, right now for a moment, I feel like ages for a minute, it's on pause, people are really nervous. Um I'm closing stuff, but that stuff that been under contract, you know, a month ago, six weeks ago, I'm not seeing a lot of new contracts right now. But that can change.
So in that, in the building category, in theory, it's a pass through, because we can only charge our fees. Based on the cost of doing what needs to be done, so if the revenue goes up, then obviously the expenses are gonna go up. And and vice versa, so any any questions on the building?
But it should just be money and money.
Yeah, it should be, in theory, passed through.
The biggest question I have is. So the cost of having sunrise due to our inspections, are we, are we, are we, are we doing prevention recovery that cost?
Yeah, and then some.
Okay.
I mean, it's, and that's one of the things that makes me a little bit nervous about it is that, again, our expenses have to match pretty close to what our revenue is. And if it's not, then we can get in trouble. The Home Builders Association will look at that sooner or later and if our expenses are higher, or if our expenses are lower than our revenue. And they are, then then they're gonna lean on us pretty hard and it's not hard to do because the state comes in and says. You're, it it's, it's only to cover what the costs, your revenue should only cover the cost of doing what you're doing. And so the more expenses we can put to that category, that go to that category, the better it looks.
So Corbin, in terms of the timing with the revenues and runs out, they channeling the same budget year or is it?
Yeah.
So it's very close proximity.
Something, so it's very close proximity.
Close enough, because the revenues that you picked up from last year that you didn't count last year. Um, you'll lose revenues this year into next year, just like you gained revenues this year from last year, so. I mean, it's it's all.
It needs to happen more or less.
Yeah, I mean, it's more, it's more the expenses, only because you wish your building permit first, and that's when you collect all your fees. And it's after that that you incur all the expenses.
Oh, that's true, okay, so it is, and so the money is like.
Yes.
Hopefully you have a builder that say that's a little. Tougher, harder to manage than another builder, do you repute those costs?
You can't, state doesn't let you. So you get an owner builder, and an owner builder expects me to be his teacher, he expects me to be his general contractor. And and you can't, you can't, the state won't allow you to charge a fee based on the ability of the builder.
Extra inspections aren't billable?
Yeah, through through failed inspections, they are.
Okay.
But.
Uh, alright.
Again, the time it takes for an owner builder that shouldn't, now there's owner builders that are okay. But there's owner builders that shouldn't be owner builders, they're they're super time consuming.
Has that? Time increased by using sunrise?
Well, the the problem you end up with now is sunrise sunrise doesn't build form. And and they know the, they know where the line is as a company, they know they can't be the teacher, the general contractor and the inspector at the same time. And so it it leaves the builder or the owner builder super frustrated. And so.
So then he calls Jody, which then Jody hands the phone to you and then he becomes a teacher now.
Yeah.
Okay.
But no, the state doesn't allow, in fact, they're really hard, I mean, they've been hard on me before as far as, you know. They're not owner builders, they're builders. Which, well. A- any questions on on the building category? I mean, a- again, the more expenses we can put towards that category, the better it looks for us. And we don't have to deal with it right now, but there's gonna be, there's gonna be a time where we will. Um, then forty-four ten, streets, roads and public improvements, is that next? Let's go back, just as a side note, forty-one forty-one three thirteen. That, uh, we've got seventy-nine thousand dollars in there, that's in anticipation of a storm drain study. That that needs to be done. Forty-one forty-one dot three thirteen.
Professional service.
Page, page three, page three.
What's the number?
Forty-one forty-one three thirteen, forty-one forty-one dot three thirteen.
Oh, yeah.
In there, in there, we're we're putting in for a storm drain study.
Right.
Um, we've talked a little bit about this, the house that got flooded down on Woodland Hills Drive. Um, they've they sued or they threatened to sue the county over that. The county has come back and said, not our water, yes, it came off of Woodland Hills Drive in the county. But that water came from Woodland Hills and Salem. And so, you know, right now, it's it's back and forth trying to figure out who's responsible for it. This, in in my opinion, this is going to bite us if we don't have something done. Now, that being said, we're, we've thrown in there fifty thousand for a storm drain study, and that's based on. On uh a recommendation from Ted. But at the same time, Ted thinks that there's a real good possibility that he can get that money in a grant. Um, hundred percent funding, and it's called the Building Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. Brick B R I C, uh but Ted thinks he can get that covered a hundred percent, and so there may be a way that we can cut fifty percent of that budget.
Yeah. Yes, I talked to him as well.
Uh, roads. Again, these are trying to uh trying to stick with the budget that we've that we've done in the past. The the wages, what, fifty-eight percent spent, just trying to reflect the same thing in next year's budget. Benefits, insurance, retirement, all pretty much the same thing, those are percentages based on the wages anticipated. Roads discretionary, I think that's high, and I don't know why I did that, but I did it in my draft. Um, but I think that's high based on what we budgeted last year and especially based on what we spent. In the past, that that has done us, I I can't tell you how much good that's done since the past, and most of it has been. Taking Noel Hyatt to lunch or Cory Hyatt buying him pizza or whatever. Um, very seldom do they ever send us a bill for what they do. That's that's why they don't send us a bill. And so it's totally discretionary on your part, if you don't wanna do it, don't. If it's not there, I won't ask, you know, I don't wanna ask them to do what they do for me, but. Uh, roads, fuel and supplies, again, trying to base that on what we've done in the past. Wheat spray, and we've, we didn't do it in last year, did we? Is that wheat spraying? Yeah, I've got all the spray, so most of that is labor. Snow removal, that's coming out, again, I think that's part of that three-year cycle, when a category is created. It's gotta be there for a while, I don't know why we have expenses in there unless it's just a mistake.
I'm like, don't look at me.
No, I I wasn't, I was more or less looking over here, but. No, it it is part of the three-year cycle, and this is an example, I'm kinda glad it's there. Of how we've, we tried to tease a few things, so we used to have snow removal just as part of roads. And that seemed. Snow removal had grown up big enough that it seemed like it needed its own area. And so this is an artifact of that, so we moved that line item to its own area, rather than just put it right there.
And we used to contract it out, and now.
Well, before, when we contracted that, you had one price, you had a contract, contract services, and you had salt.
Yeah.
And that was it. Um, now that we do it in-house, you have salt, you have wages, benefits, retirement. Um, you have wear edges, you have tools and equipment, you know, so now it's a full-fledged category. Where before it was contract services. Tools and equipment, again, you know, it's it's overspent only because of the the camera purchase. Uh, if you take the camera purchase out of there, it would be about three thousand bucks, give or take, and so. A little less than what it probably should have been for the. For the percent of budget that were, or percent of the year that were through, but. Whatever. Um, professional technical, well, forty-four ten two seventy. Uh, miscellaneous repairs in the city center, most of that's Craig's, but this time, cause Craig does all the maintenance on the building. But this time, there's thirty thousand in there for a new boiler that burns used oil. Right, Jerry?
Yep.
So what's the extra ten? Cause if there's thirty, and then last year we spent five.
Well, we did lights, we did LEDs throughout the whole bottom, I don't know if that could have been. That could have been part of it.
Would that be added into this coming budget?
You're talking about forty-four ten two sixty?
Two seventy.
Two seventy. Cause of that per five to forty-five.
And thirty is the boiler.
So there's extra five was the same slatter, if there's ten, we're not sure what that what that goes to.
Corbin, some of those numbers were the numbers we discussed, um, being, you and I talked today regarding the waste oil boiler, so there was.
Is there more in there than thirty for the boiler?
I don't believe so.
Install or something like that?
Storage tanks.
Yeah, that should probably be.
Transportation of the oil from there to here.
As Dave talked about before, we need to leave some in there in case windows break or there needs to be repairs and maintenance in there, so thirty-five, I think, was going for the waste oil boiler complete. Uh, before Corbin and I talked today, so the other ten thousand was just to have in there in case we need repairs.
We are getting close to needing paint, so.
Well, aren't, doesn't it show we've already spent about ten thousand this year?
Yes.
Nine three thirty-nine.
So, so is that maybe why it's higher?
Yeah, it it just has a little extra there, just in case we need to expand it.
No, not in that, I don't think, I don't know.
Does that came out of tools and equipment? Couple lines up.
Yeah, I, so I don't know. Principal interest, additional principal on the loan. All of those are, those are yours, I'm Chris, I'm gonna default to you on those.
I'm sorry, which one?
Four fifty, additional principal on loan.
So four fifty, when the council originally took out the loan, um, their their aspirations was to pay that loan off earlier than.
Yeah.
Um, the loan term was, and so we've never put any extra money towards it, I've thrown twenty-five thousand on there, it's a discussion point.
Is that the loan on the building?
No, five hundred eighty thousand is the loan we got from Bank of Utah for the roads and things like that.
Okay, so, let me explain that real quick, yeah, historical context. We were struggling because we don't want to spend about a hundred thousand dollars a year on roads, on actual asphalt.
And that's based on the B and C, the revenue from the B and C.
Oh, so you, I think you told us, this is economies of scale, buy it, it's cheaper versus getting later. So we took out that bond, we basically spent five years worth of loan. And the goal was that we would pay it off in five years, and then turn around and do the same thing. Again, the money was really cheap last year, like taking out a loan was super cheap.
Was zero interest, maybe.
And so it just seemed like the right pick to do, the bottom, the the bummer. For us as a council now with this year's budget. That is, we're, we basically, again, if we keep to the commitment that we had last year, we're not gonna spend any money on roads this year. Because it's all gonna go towards that loan that we.
Did we get a fixed interest? Is interest rate fixed on that, or is it variable?
Looking right now, I believe. It might be broken down into a couple different ones.
I just carried it up, please.
See, it is a fixed rate. At um.
Well, the fixed rate is the good part, I mean, good to know, but. That's why we decided to. Is it Friday?
That's what I understood.
Yeah, I don't have my fingertips right now, but it was five or less, this was kind of an unsecured, non-bonded note.
Okay. That's good news.
Oh, I'm sorry, interest rates one point five.
Yeah, I was thinking it was pretty low.
So now, now we're to four fifty-five?
Yeah.
Everybody's good with that? Um, I put in there two hundred and seventy-eight, and and that's after, so I I sent you that, the portion of the of the. Dog and pony show, I went to that and say, um, the guy that did it is. I mean, he's been been in the industry for a long time, the thing that makes me nervous is that if we don't do maintenance. Then we're always replacing roads instead of, instead of maintaining roads. Now, they talk about a perfect world where a road is built on good structural fill. Which didn't happen up here, except in the new stuff, me, Thousand Oaks and and Summer Creek. But to to go through and do maintenance, you're looking at a dollar compared to six dollars. Uh, a dollar, a dollar's worth of maintenance prevents anywhere from six to fourteen dollars worth of rebuild. Um, if we never, I mean, obviously it's a money thing, if we never get on top of it, then we're always rebuilding roads, and we're not maintaining roads. Now, in that, in that presentation, there's, there's different methods of preventative, uh. What is it called, preventative or pavement preservation, there's different methods of pavement preservation.
Which one would we?
Well, really, the only one up here that works is is micro-surfacing. You can't do chip seal because of the equipment, in a chip seal equipment, the equipment pushes the truck. And on steep roads, the truck pushes the equipment, and so it doesn't work. Um, micro-surfacing is done a different way, it's done like a slurry, except there's different chemicals that are used, different. Add additives, different add mixtures that you use in the, in the mix to make it work. Um, so micro-surfacing and then what they call a um. I can't remember what's called now.
And the micro-surfacing is a little on the more, on the expensive side.
Right.
Of all of these, but.
Uh, because of how steep the roads are.
Mineral bond?
It's even a cross between that and micro-surfacing. But the the guy that did it is willing to come and do a demonstration, a work session for us. I think it would be super informative, um, as far as helping us all understand what can be done. I gave him a map of the city, he'll go through the city as part of the presentation. And and give us a recommendation on the application for the road. It's not just a one-size-fits-all, uh, the flatter roads, you can do a different application that's less money. Than the steeper roads, I mean, especially since the steeper roads, you have to have more, more of a traction surface. As opposed to a slurry seal, which is just spreading oil on the road. So anyways, he'd like to, you know, he's willing to come and do that, he probably can't do anything until. Uh, first or second meeting in April, but. Again, it's a money issue, if you don't have the money, you you don't really do it, but.
Do we have a depreciation schedule on each of our different roads?
No. Well, then it's, it's different for, I mean, when Chris talked about just now, an unsecured asset. That's what a road is, a road is an unsecured asset, so the bonding is different, the, I mean, they don't consider roads collateral. You know, because they, like a building, um, it's it's treated a whole lot different as far as the bonding processes and the borrowing, and so.
So the only roads that are done to standard are the Summer Creek roads, some of the Thousand Oaks, and then Woodland Hills Drive.
Even Woodland Hills.
We did it, that we did.
Even Woodland Hills Drive, all we did was ground up the asphalt that was in place, compacted it and put a new coat of lipstick.
Yeah, we didn't do that, but we did have money left over, right, from our roads?
Well, yeah, but the, I mean, it's all relative, the estimate to do it right, meaning. That you dig out, because Woodland Hills Drive basically is just, it scraped off the trees, the stumps, they didn't get all the roots.
Put us, we had four inches. Road base under Woodland Hills Drive.
Only enough to make it level. Serious.
So it's good.
There is no structural, there is no structural fill underneath Woodland Hills Drive.
And either, and all of the roads from A and B, but A and B are the same way.
Right, but you look in in a comparison to get a good feel for it, is you look at the roads in Thousand Oaks. And you know, we've done to those roads in Thousand Oaks in twenty years, nothing. We've done a little bit of crack fill, we did one uh. Slurry seal or a chip seal sort of, kind of a mix, that most of it got scraped off. And other than that, we've done absolutely nothing to those roads in twenty years, now for all intents and purposes. Based on, based on this industry standard, those roads should be dirt roads after twenty years of no pavement preservation. But because we don't have the traffic, you don't have near as much wear and tear on the roads, and because they were built better than. The standard, they're they're in fairly decent shape, especially for not having done any preventative maintenance. And then you look at Woodland Hills Drive, and Woodland Hills Drive is seven years old, and we've already done pothole repair. It's fallen apart, there're more more potholes need to be fixed, more allegory, alligatoring needs to be done, and it's only. needs to be done, and it's only seven years old compared to twenty. It's because all the asphalt is, is lipstick on the structure that's underneath it.
And we were talking about, at one point, the Public Works Department going through and, and kind of categorizing the roads, which ones were the worst, two better, and so that we might can start thinking about how we're going to repair in a specific order. Because there are some that are, are really bad, but again, it's because the original developers just, you know, bulldozed some trees down and slapped some asphalt on, and, and so there's, that, that was good enough for them at the time, and we've kind of just done the same thing. We haven't gone in and truly repaired any of them.
Well, the roads, I mean, we talked about rebuilding roads. No, you're not rebuilding roads.
You're building.
You're building roads, because they never got built correctly in the first place.
Or would you show that Summer Creek has been done according to, because I don't think we have that extra layer that was supposed to be put over it, did we?
Yeah. Well, no, we didn't get the, we didn't get the overlay.
Yeah.
You know, but I, I guess that's a topic for another discussion, or a discussion for another time.
So just speaking to the just replacement plan, we actually did that in Public Works Committee. And then, so we have that work, but it kind of got torpedoed by the water replacement, which rearranged all the priorities.
Right.
Around water. And Mayor Gray made this comment. At first I was like, that's a horrible comment. But the more I've been around roads and water, the more I agree with her, is we can, we can drive on dirt. We can't handle cracked pipes. You know, and so you almost have to let the water dictate which roads you do.
That's industry standard. Industry standard says you don't just replace the road, you wait until you get the best bang for your buck, and that includes the infrastructure under the road. And so, I mean, we think we had a good idea?
But at the same time, with that in place, we recognize that as we've gone through and we, we found the roads after the water project in each phase,
Okay, it's okay. Because you just said something that was absolutely not true. We did not redo the roads. We put lipstick on them.
Well, that's what I was just gonna finish saying.
That's all we did.
I was just gonna finish saying that. We, we rid, we redid the roads to what they were originally. We didn't redo them completely to the standards, and that's why when we looked at the budget there, we have, I, I don't have that exact page in front of me, but we have, you know, Broad Hollow and Pine and all of those were a certain amount, and then we have that little section of, of West Lofer, because we're, we're doing that little section correctly for the two hundred and twenty thousand and for four, yeah, or two fifteen, and then we're doing all of the rest of them for quite a bit less collectively. I mean, it's more, but it's collectively each road is, is much less to, because we're just kind of doing the road, but we're not doing it to the standard that you're saying that really needs to be done throughout the city in Platte A and B.
Well, again, a perfect world means that that road's gonna have twelve to sixteen inches of good structural subbase. It's gonna have six inches of road base, and then you're gonna put three inches of asphalt on top of that, and you're going to contain the road. Now, we did curbing on Woodland Hills Drive. All of Thousand Oaks and Summer Creek has that flat top curb on the, on the sides. Utah County uses an extra four feet of asphalt. That four feet of asphalt outside of the travel lanes does the same thing as our concrete curb does, but you get an extra, you know, eight, nine, ten feet of road to preserve the travel lane. We do the curbing on the sides of the road because we don't want to give up another four feet of trees on both sides of the road. Whatever, but I, I mean, there's a reason for everything that you do. I, I would like to see us have that work session. Get some, get some industry standard education on what needs to be done, how you do it. Get a recommendation from a professional and, and Public Works Committee, bless their hearts, they, they're not professionals. They don't, they don't know what the industry standard requirements are. They don't know what the, the trade specifications. Yeah, you can look at a road, but if you don't know what's underneath that road and how it affects what's on top, you're just looking at a road. And, and so, again, compare it to, compare Woodland Hills Drive, which, you know, for all intents and purposes, is a brand-new road. It, it's only seven years old, and compare Woodland Hills Drive to Thousand Oaks. And, and Thousand Oaks is in much better shape than Woodland Hills Drive, so four bit, being three times old.
And Craig, I, I wanna come back, if you still have the comment that you.
Well, I was just gonna bring up the fact that they do a million square feet in Salem just to preserve their roads so they don't have to re-surface them. And he says that's not enough, that they, they're constantly doing it, so they're not having to rebuild their roads.
So that's two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, how much mileage does that get us, like in terms of what, what percentage of the city roads with that address?
So industry standard says, within the first two years of a road being brand-new, you've got to do some kind of surface treatment. You've got to do some kind of preservation. If you don't, again, that, that curve on, on the road longevity, the life of a road, it drops off pretty darn fast. Whereas if you do some kind of treatment in the first two years, you can bring it back up to better than brand-new.
Would this two seventy-eight get the whole city done, or is it just?
It'll only do the four miles of road that we just did.
Okay.
And, and then.
So here's the challenge. I disagree one bit with what Corbett's saying. I strongly agree. But our class C road allocation this next year is only a hundred thousand.
Actually, it's only ninety.
Well, I'm looking at the proposed budget. But whether it's ninety or hundred, it doesn't matter. It's not two whatever. So for us to spend two whatever means can't spend. I mean, we, we gotta come up with a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars that we're not spending in other areas.
So let, let me just say that that two seventy-eight is just a talking point. It, it's just throwing a number out there, hopefully to say, whoa, there's no way we can afford this. We've got to look at this smart.
Well, that's actually what I'm trying to say is, right now, regardless of what the number is and whether it's, you know, thirty thousand here or there, we, we don't have the funding to do that. Now, at least the, most of the councils that sat in our seats, whether it was before my time or not, have always prioritized roads pretty high. And yet, we're still always falling behind. And it's simply because we don't have the revenue. That's, that's the bottom line, is it's, it's a revenue problem with our roads. We have more roads than we have revenue.
Well, and the, and the industry will always tell you that roads are a money pit. What, what do you want to do? Do you want to drive on, on asphalt? Do you want to drive on dirt roads? Or something in between? And, and again, that's why I'd like to have this guy come in, let him go through the roads in town, let him get a little bit of background, understanding of what's there, what should be there, what isn't there, and then, and then make an educated presentation to the council, and then let them decide.
And it's not because of that, but our budgetary constraints, like what we can afford.
Well, and, and one of the things that he talked about that Provo City has done, Hyden City did it, there's been several cities that have done it. The state is, is trying to intervene, but what cities are doing is they're doing a use tax or a use fee for the roads.
And it has to be very careful, because Pleasant Grove got sued because they did their use fee for roads incorrectly, so there is.
I mean, you, you gotta be careful doing it, but, but one of the things they did by doing that is you raise taxes to cover roads, and the state gets a piece of that pie. If you do it in a fee, then one hundred percent of the money stays here, and it's dedicated for just this. So don't raise your taxes, raise your fee, create a fee to do what you want to do, and then have a plan that's gonna do the same thing every year to maintain your roads. This, I mean, your roads are a three to five-year cycle. If you're not doing something on every single road every three to five years, that road is gonna fail prematurely. Now, again, look at the, look at the slides that I sent you. You, you do that pavement preservation, and you'll get fifty years out of a road.
Yeah, Corey, is this presentation free?
Yes. The, the study that he's doing is free.
He would come into the city.
He would come to your city council meeting to do it.
Well, and the one thing that is, is another variable is that, as with everything else in the supply chain and the cost of fuel and everything else, we know that each of these proposals will probably be very up and down for the next few years, even if we try to do a strategic long-term plan.
Absolutely.
We may only be able to budget this much, but is it going to get us a mile of road or two miles of road?
Well, we'll have a plan though, I mean.
If we have a plan, we can, we can kind of know what it's gonna be.
And based, and based on your, based on your needs and the traffic volume, do you need a five-year plan, or can you go seven years or nine years? The worst thing you could do to a road is nothing, because as that road, as that road deteriorates, as the oil evaporates out of it, as it oxidizes, then it starts to fall apart, and it starts to fall apart pretty darn fast.
Well, don't we have more deterioration because it doesn't have road base as the mountain shifts? You know, just general erosion, this kinds of, and the water goes underneath. When it comes down and runs off the hill, it's not just a drainage problem for the water, it goes underneath that asphalt and starts making those cracks and, and has, and that instability just is increased.
Yeah, Corey, you were saying this two seventy-eight would be to put preservation funds, basically, or process, slurry, whatever it is, on the roads we just did last year?
The four miles of road we just did.
So would it make more sense for us to have those on the schedule to be preserved next year?
So well, two years, within the first two years. All the industry says is within the first two years, you need to do some kind of preservation treatment on a new road.
So would it make sense if we put this on Woodland Hills Drive this year, and then sealed those for preservation next year? And then create a schedule and a plan as to some of the forecast?
I, I'm leaning on this guy for professional opinions.
Yep, that's probably what we're at.
Well, I mean, and we gotta consider that he is a vendor of the services. I mean, so it's sort of like, you go to the dealership, they say, hey, your rail changed every three thousand miles. You know, well, you can probably go fifty-five hundred.
Right.
While he's typing.
There's one more consideration here, and that is.
So that is to, you're saying to preserve four miles of those roads that go down the mountain? Is, is, this is the estimation for those.
No, not that's, that's, that's for more than, so they, one of the treatments isn't, they call it an HA five. Now, you've probably seen the trucks all over. It's, it's new technology. It's only been out about seven years. As far as roads go, it's new. But HA five is, is outperforming everything that, that anybody's ever seen so far. It's more of a chemical treatment, but it's based on how old the road is, how much oil is still in the road. Have you captured that oil to keep it from evaporating, oxidizing out? And so, you know, I mean, you, you read that, that presentation, it's, it's the right treatment on the right road at the right time. It's not a one-size-fits-all. And so, let's wait till this guy, the two seventy-eight, it could be fifty, it could be five hundred. I, I don't know.
Basically, it's for those four miles.
No, it's for the four miles and trying to have a plan in place to do what needs to be done on a regular basis. Is that, is that a three, a three-year or a five-year cycle for every road in town? Or is it a ten-year cycle for every road in town? I don't know until he comes back.
So I would say, let's try to get that on the calendar.
As soon, as soon as he can go through the roads in town, he'll be back with me. And then, and then we'll go over it and see if we can set a time that works for, for council. I'll talk to you about that.
Sounds good.
So there's one more thing to consider here with the, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Four days ago, three states proposed having a gas tax holiday. It's up to twenty-two states now. So there's a chance if Utah decides to have a gas tax holiday, that there could be some reduced revenues in class B and C road funds.
Now, we get very little as it is.
So just, just to be aware that, that could be coming.
That's why they always threaten you if you don't agree with state mandates, is that they'll take away your B and C road funds, so. That's why we want people.
All right.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, sorry.
Wait, did you have something to?
Yeah, I just wanted to alert the council. Part of, part of the development agreement that we're working on with Southern Creek, part of that involves their request to, for us to vacate relatively small portion of two of our roads back to them. In exchange, they're willing to do a lot of, they're willing to finish one road that, that is just a, it's, it's not paved, and to do a lot of block line ditches and other related expenses. I've been, last week, putting some figures together on this. And this planning commission is going to be talking about it Wednesday night. We'll be making a recommendation to you all as to whether we think it's an appropriate thing for the city to do. That's certainly not an answer to the problems that we have with roads, but it's, it's partial. These roads, they want to make private roads out of them, and Summer Creek is planning, wants to have other private roads within the development that, that has nothing to do with this exchange. So I, I just wanted to alert you to that eventuality, an issue coming up. Before you, we're looking at maybe giving up more or less about a million dollars worth of city property in the form of the roads that they were looking at, the way that I swag the, the value on it, versus what they're willing to do with some of it. City's obligated, but we don't have money to do it, and it's, it's similar. It's about nine hundred plus thousand dollars. So, again, it's not the answer to the budget woes, but it's something just to be aware of. And hopefully you'll see it in the next couple of weeks as we further discuss it and make recommendations.
On my end, what you're saying, like. That was really the swing factor for me that came to whether or not to approve private roads. I was very, very against private roads, because it just made me feel icky. But then I, I kind of said, we can't afford the roads we got. And at least by doing the private roads, we still get the property tax, but we don't have to shave the roots.
I like your role, and we're gonna auction our roads off.
Yeah, well, but to that, to that point, if you can't afford private road, or if you can't afford the roads you've got, neither can they, unless they're charging their residents for it. And so that's one of the reasons that, according to David Church, that's one of the reasons, one of the reasons that HOAs fail. They start off just fine, but then when the expenses start rolling in, they go belly up because they can't afford it.
And then it goes back to the city.
Any more than the city, any more than the city can afford.
The city's not obligated to take them back.
Right.
They have to, the city can establish certain standards that road has to meet before it will take it back. So we're in the driver's seat on that, if that, if that comes to be.
But the safe, I mean, that's the safety net that's created. The city doesn't have to take over HOA roads if they don't meet city standards. So who pays to bring them up to city standard?
HOA.
Your residents. And, and so it's a, it's a catch twenty-two, you know, what do you do? But, I mean, that's one of the reasons why HOAs fail, is because when the expenses start rolling in, they can't afford roads either. Another, another comment to that, to the road preservation. Spanish Fork and Salem both, and I'm sure there's others, but they've adopted requirements for a new developer to provide that surface treatment before he can be released from durability. Wayne and, Wayne and I have talked about this a little bit, at least I think we did, in Madrid. Okay. But we need to have that, we need to have that looked at seriously in our development and construction standards, that before a developer is released from durability, he does that first round of surface treatment to preserve the roads.
So he put in one year, and the next year come back?
No, if he puts it in within the first two, then it doesn't come back around, and again, depending on the treatment, it doesn't come. it doesn't come back around for five years, three to five years. And so, if the developer does it before he's released from durability.
Which would be at the three to five years.
No, that'd be after one year.
Well, that's what I was saying, it's asked you originally, after one year, he would do that then.
At the end of one year, yes, at the end of one year, the developer would be required to do it. But then it wouldn't come back to the top of the list as far as us doing it. For another five years. Anyways, most, most cities are doing it, I mean, everybody's learning as we go. And hopefully we'll hold on shirt-tails of everybody else and not have to go through the.
Let them all do it, so that when the developer winds to us that we're requiring too much, we can say, you Philip, and here, here, and here, and there, and they all have.
And you do it there. Why wouldn't you expect to do it there? Okay, mitigation, fiber installs, I'm gonna skip. Fiber installs is a pass-through, yeah, mitigation is a zero, obviously. Forty-four, ten, seven forty, two hundred and sixty-eight.
Do we have this break broken down? I know, but this is a double line item, so this is another one of those split items, we got this on another area, right?
It's a half, is that what you mean? Half in water, half in road.
Seventeen thousand for?
Nineteen.
Seventeen for truck loans?
Eighteen.
Yeah, then whatever. What else is in that number?
Two hundred and fifty for building addition, eighteen for a truck.
No, that's what it.
What else is in the building addition number?
What do you mean?
Is that a Chris question?
Well, i- in, in my number for, I mean, I, I've put in half million bucks for building addition. That includes a, a new boiler system for the building that would utilize waste oil.
So is that on there twice then?
In a way, we've got a thirty, thirty-five thousand in there for a, a, a new boiler for the building on its own and, and building maintenance for yeah, miscellaneous repairs to city facilities. So we've got a boiler in there, and then the five hundred, that's half water, half roads, would have a boiler in there. So, obviously, you wouldn't do it twice, but.
So, if we then do it, Jody was talking about at the beginning of the meeting, if we can get a, a mortgage on this extension using the natural gas savings to potentially cover said mortgage, we'll be able to pull potentially half a million dollars out of the budget here?
Uh, you'd pull two hundred and eighty out of road, out of general, because the other is in water, which is an inference funding. The other two fifty is in.
So we pulled two fifty out of both sides.
Plus the thirty.
Perfect, yeah.
Any questions?
Which will put us closer to our actual balance budget.
Well, that puts your two hundred and eighty closer. It's all mine here, right?
Well, we don't wanna have to pull out of savings again, because you're gonna run out of savings, hopefully.
Any, any questions or concerns or discussions?
Yeah, well, one of the things about the, about that for the building, it, it's not just the addition of the building, remember, we have that rock wall that needs to be replaced, so that would be taken care of. Because that was estimated at about sixty thousand, and so.
It was a little less, but still, it was something.
It was still significant, what we had to do. Also makes this swift compliance, it also extends the life, I think, of our fire trucks, that they can be washed inside. Because right now, either they're washed outside, and it's not on the, the snowplow, and so all of that is, they're washed outside, which then freezes and is causing a, um, liability for accident. So if they can be washed inside, I think that all of that combined builds up to that, um, that this has a financial value that isn't just, that takes away a bunch of liability for us.
I, I love this idea, I'd just love to not pay for cash.
Well, if we can pay for it as a mortgage, which Chris, you explained that to us a while back, that we could get it as a, as a mortgage, and then we can use some of the savings from the oil, et cetera, to pay for pay for that mortgage.
And did, Ben, did you say you prefer to pay cash or the mortgage?
I would prefer not to pay cash.
Not to pay cash, okay.
Well, with interest rates low right now, it seems like.
Well, and Corey was saying something about potential zero interest rate mortgage.
Well, I'm just saying, we, we got a lot of money, we got a lot of money for no interest, for zero interest. I don't know if the same thing is available for a building. Obviously, it wasn't for roads, because roads are, uh,
Not an asset, yeah, or the building would be.
So I had dinner with Mark Anderson the other night from Zion's Bank, and we were going over the fire truck loan and potential expansion. Money's not free right now. And so, it's actually been ticking up. We could get a loan mid-threes to low fours at this point. It's a pretty volatile market and it changes daily. We could get a thirty-day lock-in if we were looking, but it's, it's just a way to go to.
But it'll probably be similar.
Yeah, so I, I don't know what that, I don't know as far as what that would do to your payment. You know, over twenty years or fifteen or thirty or.
No, we just get a shorter-term bond with, with a, uh, earlier buyout, so we could jump out of this when rates went back down.
That's what we investigate sooner than later with interest rates.
Uh, yeah.
Only lock in before Friday?
Chris, how good are you?
Zion's Bank will lock us in, but the challenge we have is we don't have a set of plans, we don't have a bid, we don't have we don't have anything official to give Zion, say, we need two million dollars or.
How good are you?
Well, I mean, the, the problem is, in, in order to really pin that number down, I've gotta have a set of engineered plans.
And you're ten. What does that number look like?
Ten grand.
Just so you know, the city has pretty much maxed out on all of our assets to borrow money. So that's why we need to be a little more particular. Zion's will get the money, get the bonding, the mortgage's the new end of the building for it. But, it's not like a couple of years ago, we could say, well, we think we're gonna need one point two million, and they could figure it out. Now, we're so tight that they want, they're gonna want numbers and, and firm bids.
Is that where that extra ten grand is? Is in that forty-five thousand for the weather, the weather class?
Thirty-five, and then there's ten, because we're, we're already running around ten grand a year for building maintenance.
So, Corey, if we could get some, if the council wants to approve, I don't know what it costs, ten grand, twenty grand for somebody to do the building, have mechanical go through and structural and do all that kind of stuff, and then go out to bid, this would have to go out to bid on RFP. You know, we're talking potentially s- four weeks to six weeks just for the RFP alone. Whatever it costs to get the building designed, we might be able to have something back in three months.
So do we have to have an RFP for the design of the building?
It's over fifty K, no, if it's over a hundred thousand, yes, but the design of the building, no.
The design of the buildings, I mean, both LEI and, and Ted Jones in the middle have told me that, that the design would be right around ten grand.
Yeah, if we could do the design, if council want to, to approve the design, we could do that, look for the money's gonna get or come from.
I know, we've talked about the idea of having everything that you, you need for public works that would just extend off of this building, and then we, the possibility of having an, uh, a patio-type structure on top that we could, covered patio that we could rent to citizens, so they would have a nice view of the valley, they're having a wedding, or other things that, like, we rent the inside, we could rent the outside as well. So, it could be as small as one. Well, we've had some things, and we've had work on over Southern Creek to have. You know, people couldn't speak, or, we could do it here instead.
Do we need to add that to the council agenda?
Uh, which part?
The engineering, the ten grand for blueprints?
Yeah, I mean, if, 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 uh, it's got sufficient support, I mean, of course, I'm gonna be perfectly candid, one of my concerns is not so much with the building solutions, which we've talked about, but, but uh, you, you asked me a question, and I'm. But I, but I, I, I can't say that I am fully in support of this myself. Um, I think that there are a lot of uh, good, uh, elements to it, but that's a huge chunk of money too, so.
For sure.
It's something I am a little hesitant to move on hastily, but, I mean.
Can I suggest something? The design of the building, if, if you want to do an addition to this building, whether it's now or in ten years, if you wanna do it as an addition to the building, the design isn't going to be wasted, it's not gonna be wasted money. But, but it will let you at least get a really good idea of what, what your material lists are gonna be. Now, if you wait, then obviously, material's gonna go up or down. But you'll have that basic list of material to know what it's gonna take to build that building, when you decide to build it. Now, cart before the horse, chicken and egg, then you gotta do that design before you can ever figure out what it's gonna cost you to build it.
And it doesn't expire, that's a great point. I mean, it is something that we can use this year.
Well, I also think that we need to consider if we don't build it and we hold off because we're concerned, that we still have to come in and say, we have to do something about that rock wall. So, if that's sixty thousand, that's that seems to be something that would be ripped out in, in four, two or three or four years, then that might seem like it was a.
You don't wanna throw good money out the bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then the same with the SWIFT compliance, which we know, all, that's a federal mandate that says all your equipment has to be inside. So that nothing drips down. Now, Salem was, was threatened with that five hundred thousand dollar fee. Fine, um, we haven't yet gotten them radar, but they, they are starting to look around to see if cities are compliant.
And I'm familiar with this rock wall element, that's news.
Yeah, all of this rock wall out here, if, if you look real close at the, at the rocks, all the rocks are fractured. It's because when they quarry the rocks, they deal with dynamite, which puts micro-fractures through the rocks. And then the rocks, they take on water, they freeze, they expand, and then it just feels off.
And we pick up pieces like this down on the.
Don't park next to that wall.
Take away.
It was not an engineered wall.
Okay.
Back to the ten grand. We don't have that budget.
This line is.
For this year?
Sorry.
Or for next, although it might be on, on your forenet. But, that's, that was my question, Ben, is, you know, this, again, this is, this is kind of the flip side of the city, but is, you know, we don't like how loosey-goosey it is, and yet now, we're, we're running into the fact that it's too tight.
You need a little bit of latitude to.
And so, we don't have ten thousand budgeted. So if we're going to do this, the process is, we have to open the budget, we have to move money from somewhere else. And, and that's, that's what you have to do. So you can't just say, let's spend ten thousand. Well, that's why I'm saying, can we put it on the agenda for that, those types of things, so we can come prepared for that work session, to be able to talk about it, to be able to come to a conclusion and a decision. A better idea would be, I mean, you're on the right track, but a better idea would be to have a proposal where somebody says, here's where we can get the ten grand. Okay, and then we come to the city council meeting saying, here's where we can get it, here's where we move it from, and then all we have to do is go. And that's exactly what I'm saying, if we put it, if it was planned for it, that we're having that discussion, then we're, we're coming with those proposals. Right, we're coming prepared to that meeting, instead of coming to that meeting to do the work.
Well, and the mayor, you have anything under ten thousand, you can approve.
I guarantee it'll be nine thousand.
Right, so you still have the ability to do that with this as well, if you found it to be, if you found it to be something that was, we're allowed to go through, it doesn't necessarily have to go through that same process.
Right, well, I mean, so, I'm sort of a one-trick pony, I mean, my focus for better or worse is largely on the legal side of, uh, the city's issues too, so, while I, uh, totally in support of us building, not just responding to problems, I, I, I just to me, it does seem like it's kind of the neat couple of years that we're in, last year and this one, and so I just, you know, and I, Corbin and I have talked about this, I think it's a, a great idea, I, it, but I I'm just, you know, not entirely convinced on the timing of the execution. Having said that, I think that it would be perfectly appropriate to bring it forward to council, so who would you like to recommend as to the person who brings that ten thousand dollars?
I think then.
Sure.
Okay. And yeah.
So I can work with the Yeah, then I'll probably need to talk with you as well, see what we can find, and we'll figure something out, or we'll find out that we can't figure something out.
Or it's a citizen, I think that thinks that there's a tree on his property.
Yes.
Okay, so, forty-four, ten, six, ten, right?
Corbett, before we leave this, what, I, I just wanna reiterate what Dave is saying. What, what, what's been called as a shell game is actually wise financial management, not only by me, not only by Corbett, not only by Jody and Craig, but by each one of you. So, we're able to, at the last minute, we need salt, we're out of salt, we're overspending on salt budget. What do we do? We go to the budget, quote-unquote, shell game, we find the money so we can get salt, preserve the roads. As David said, if we get too tight, we're gonna box ourselves in the corners, that's gonna require public hearings, fourteen-day notices, um, and all those kinds of things. So, i- it's, the budget's a budget, it's not a narrative, so sometimes it's not as intuitive for the average citizen to go through and try and pick out every single little thing, it's not designed to do that.
Now, also, also keep in mind that, that the departments that benefit from the expense should pay for the expense. Now, we've already talked about this for a long time, that water and roads should pay for the building addition. And so, you're not looking at trying to find ten thousand dollars out of roads. You're, you're trying to find five thousand dollars out of roads and five thousand dollars out of water.
And maybe snowplow, there's a snowplowing, that's thirty-three hundred bucks each.
And, and again, not that that's the shell game, but that's, that's where that, that expense should come from. Because those are the departments, so that's the area of the budget, that benefits from the expense.
That's also why it's a little difficult to trace the money. But once you understand the game, it's not that. But yes, I will totally grant that, the first time I saw this budget.
Well, plus if you don't know the historical, like, you know, you don't know what's going into each category, that's why. I don't know the history of that.
First time, and even the second time.
I mean, how, how far do you take it? I mean, does administration help benefit from the building? I mean.
I'll give up some of my.
I was just gonna say, legal fees, that's.
But within, within reason, it, it's, it's, it's easily justifiable, and not that you're trying to justify anything, but it's easily explainable that water, roads, and snowplowing would absolutely benefit from a building addition. Those, those should absolutely pay for it. Now, does parks benefit from it? Will help? If you're gonna go that way, fire, fire benefits from it too. But is it, is that justifiable, even if it just spreads public works out of fire, so that the back end of the back truck doesn't hang over the door of the, you know what I mean? And so, how far do you take it?
Within bars, we can find the money, it's how far we take.
But within reason, is general fund, I mean, when I look at it, general fund is general fund.
All the same pot.
And you fund parks and roads and snowplow and fire and EMS and, 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 out of general fund? So, really, could you just do it out of general fund and road or and water? You, you guys figured that out?
For me, I don't, I'm, I, I'm with you, Mary, a little bit here, is if we're having to find it from so many places just to scrounge up that money, the answer's probably next year or the year after.
Something's wrong.
Right, because I, I don't think draining the bucket for a pair of plans, and we might not be able to use, that doesn't make sense.
But then again, on the other side of that, some research will probably always be in the way, I mean, I think these are made circumstances.
Always something.
There's always something.
But it would come out of the same budgets next year. It would still come out of, it would still come out of snowplowing, still come out of roads, still come out of water, so it doesn't matter which year. That's just the way it should be expensed out, everybody sharing the building.
But my hope is, next year potentially, the legal fees aren't, you know, two hundred grand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that should disseminate a little bit more funds.
But remember, we're almost out of the insurance money.
Yes.
We're almost out of insurance money.
I'm thinking, hopefully, we.
Joan's got some news, we can get that magic eight ball out and ask it a question, but we did have a ruling on the hearing that was held on January thirty-first. Uh, and it was a motion to dismiss with, uh, a recommendation that the Board of Adjustments or Appeal Officer hear the issue on building height. Now, this is an issue that our Board of Adjustments has already heard. Now, this is an issue that our Board of Adjustments has already heard. Um, so. The question is, it shouldn't be a no brainer, but can they take it after? If it's already been heard, can they take that back to the district court and say? We're just doing, we're appealing just that ruling that's already been done, or?
Our attorneys were gonna look at that, discuss it with the other attorneys to see if that was possible.
So that decision. Did it get dismissed?
All but that one.
Yeah, the building height, the building height was remanded back to the to the city board of appeals.
But I do think we have to be careful discussing legal proceedings in here.
Yeah.
We need to be careful.
Thanks, sir.
So again, i- if you're if you're trying to take that money out of. Fire and EMS and parks and everything else, don't you have to put money into those categories also? I mean, you're not gonna take, you're not gonna get what a turnip, right? And so you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to put money in those budgets if you're gonna take money out of it. So just keep it simple. I I that's what I would recommend, you know.
Well, again, he's asking for ten thousand. And. The fines that may come because of liabilities of not having even exceed that might be worth our effort to. At least get the plans in place so that if it came and said, I'm gonna, we're gonna slap a hundred thousand or twenty thousand, we could say. Hey, we're in the process.
Right.
And then they hold that, right? Or that wall, at least we can see if it starts deteriorating more at aggressive level, then we can say, oh, our plans are in place, let's do that.
You know why we built, remember why we built the salt shed? You remember why we built the salt shed?
So we're salt here.
No, Reed.
Nelson.
Is it Reed Nelson, the property owner down there? He he had filed a complaint against the city because all that salt was washing down onto his, onto his property. So if you look at this apron out in front of this building. And if that's not an environmental nightmare, I don't know what is. But what do we do? I mean, not that, I mean, not that it's good, not that.
Damaged by the salt.
Not that it's a good idea, but we don't have a choice. We're doing the best we can with what we've got. Now, you build that building and and in the in what I've what I've. Written up and proposed, I wanna tear out all this apron out in front of the old the old building. And replace it with a snowmelt, put the concrete back, but put tubing in it for a snowmelt, a snowmelt in front of the new addition. And and so washing the trucks inside the building so it's safer and you recover the salt to to do a brine solution. I mean, there's, there's a lot that goes into it, but I I've already hand drawn. Ben, I've already hand drawn plans. I've gone, I mean, I've. I've got friends that are engineers, I beat them up pretty good as far as. You know, telling what I want, what I wanna do, and so I I've got, I think I've got a pretty comprehensive design. That I think an engineer would stamp if they were willing to go through the whole thing. And so we may get it done for a lot less than ten grand.
Then let's let's take it back into that. Finance and see how much we need from them and then we can propose it.
Okay. Um classy road maintenance, and and any questions there? That classy DNC road funds is committed for that five hundred eighty thousand dollar bond. Um, there's still, there's still money that we didn't spend on that bond to do the portion of West Lofer. And so there's, you know, there's still things to be done, there's limitations on that revenue. Um, any questions on that for me? I think most of them go to Chris anyways. Okay. Um, forty-four, twenty-four, fifty, I wanna do garbage. That's awesome. But that's a pass through as far as the revenue collected. And the the fees that are paid to waste management for that. Any questions on that? Okay, snow plowing. Again, just trying to base it off of past years and how we've turned out, trying to adjust as as we find that we're. Not doing it good enough or didn't have enough salt left over, whatever.
Corbin, how are the plows over yet? The new ones.
Um, I mean. Plowing snow is so hard on equipment. I mean, it is just absolutely. It it just destroys equipment, even though they're brand new trucks, they've taken considerable amount of maintenance. Only because plowing is absolutely hard on equipment. Really, the only way to to avoid, in my opinion, the only way to avoid that is to go with bigger trucks. The drawback to that is it takes a CDL. That truck is as big as you can get without requiring a CDL to drive, CDL license. Um, that truck is as big as you can get. Anything bigger takes a CDL. So.
Our big international.
The the orange one takes a CDL. So a CDL, anything over twenty-six thousand pounds. Uh, in a single vehicle or anything over nineteen thousand in a truck and a trailer requires it. So my pickup, that three fifty. If you pull the trailer and you could get your GBW over nineteen thousand, you gotta have a CDL to drive that three fifty. So the trucks downstairs, they're as big as you can get without requiring a CDL. To drive it like it is without pulling a trailer. If you put a trailer behind it, you gotta have a CDL. Okay, so the only way, in my opinion, and most cities, their plows are big trucks. Yeah, they they have small trucks that still do the. Cul-de-sacs that take maneuverability. Parking lots for cities that have more parking lots than we do. But the only way, Reed, you're gonna get away from beating up a truck is to get a absolute bigger truck. I mean, the international, it. It it, we're hard on it, but it takes the beating. A lot, a lot better, and and it's not invincible either, but it takes the beating a lot better than the little trucks.
And we have to replace the blades quite often, don't we? And is that because they're smaller trucks or because we have the non-CDL drivers?
Most of the blade wear is.
Driveways.
Operator error.
So is it, do we need to have additional training then? Because it's like those blades are expensive.
Yeah, I mean, a blade for the big truck is twenty-two hundred bucks. The wear edge for the big truck is twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, the little trucks are about fourteen, sixteen hundred bucks.
How often do you have to play, replace those during the season?
No, we haven't replaced the new trucks yet at all. And this is.
Their leases are up next year, so we can get new trucks.
What's that, Chris?
We can get new trucks after next season, so we we got a three-year lease on them, so that that's kind of a nice thing, we can keep working them out.
Yeah, so the wear edge, but we budget, we budget in that snowplow budget for wear edges. But, you know, again.
So the lease is for three years and then we can upgrade to the next model.
Do you want to?
I don't know, that's what I'm just asking.
Well, but then you gotta have CDLs, then then everybody that drives has to have a CDL, and and then you cut your crew. You know, by seventy percent. I mean, there's only, you know.
We know how much of the CDL training.
No idea.
And we think that the CDL.
To get a CDL.
They can do it on their own. I mean, it only takes a class B, CDL B, or whatever it is.
The pay rate jumps pretty good.
Don't, but I'm I'm sorry, but when you pay a snowplow driver twenty-seven bucks an hour, I'll stay home.
On Christmas Eve.
Yeah, especially, you know, you're dealing with snow, you're dealing with people that get. Sorry, but they're, they get pissed off at you, you know, you fill the end of their driveway with snow, and you know what it's like, nobody likes it. But with a plow, all you can do is push snow. And and to to plow all night long, why does Chris Jensen do it? I have no idea, but he still does.
Cause he just loves being out with that truck.
We are super grateful.
Yes, we are.
To pay somebody twenty-seven bucks an hour.
It's just for them to have fun at night. But also, we have to remember too, that um, that the big truck can go everywhere, I mean, those side cul-de-sacs, they can go on those big, those little teen roads.
I I prefer. I I'd love to drive that big truck all over town, even down on the the top end of Sky Lake. I mean, you can push harder, you can push more, you can push it further. I mean, that plow is, that plow is eight feet out in front of your wheels.
I will say this, our our snowplow drivers are incredible.
They are.
Yeah, they are.
We have better roads than anywhere in county.
Yeah.
We were just talking about. I mean, I'm sorry, but you guys are flat spoiled. So you should go through the roundabout, what happens? Everybody's off the road.
Yeah.
But then at the same time, i- if you've got even a a. A teeny skip of snow across the road, now what do they do? What do your residents do? They complain, even if even if you can see through the snow and you can see the asphalt, they're upset because it's not dry.
I think I did that this morning.
Okay.
Complained.
I did.
Yeah, she did.
I complained about the road so much, I complained about the car, there was a truck that was blocking the road at the top because it couldn't get down, right? Or he didn't wanna go down, so I drove all the way up around the corner of Sky Lake, only to see this big crane blocking the whole road. So I had to back down the whole way because there was other construction cars there. But again, it's. I I just think that if they're gonna block a road, they should put a sign up so that people don't come up.
Absolutely. But again, that's that's education.
But it was because the road had a little snow on it. That they just stood there and blocked the entire.
It's it's a catch twenty-two, do you go bigger trucks, cut your crew by seventy percent? You stay with the small trucks, deal with the maintenance, you know, maybe you stick with the lease to where. When you actually, when you physically wear that truck out after three years, you trade it in and you swap it off for another new one.
But it sure has been nice, having had been here in the middle when I fixed them and went. And we haven't had to call anybody in to help the snowplow.
Yeah.
Since we bought those trucks.
And let's remember, just because you have a CDL does not mean you should be in that big orange truck.
Is that from experience?
Yes.
Or whatever they are, bigger, little, it's been nice.
It's a big truck.
Well, but anyways, I mean, it it's a game to try to, to try and figure it all out.
I think anyone who complains, so maybe this is a little too strong, but. When when I was first on the council, I I asked and uh, went out with the snowplow drivers. And. He actually let me drive for a while. And I have to say, I came away extremely humbled. It is brutally hard to freaking see anything. Well, and then on top of not being able to see. You did, you had residents that were on the side of the roads that had parked their cars there or whatever. And it's a, it's a full-out blizzard. Your wipers are going as fast as they can, your heater's going as fast as it can, you cannot see.
Mayor, I did it Thursday morning.
Drivers do as good as they do.
Did you?
Just dropped dead amazing.
Crazy, yeah.
It was interesting, there was, we went on Thursday and there were still trash cans all along, laying in the snow and cars right on the edge and it was crazy.
And and you're trying to widen the road, you got people parking, they need traders on the side of the road, and. You know, I mean, it it's. It's a, it's a full-on game to try to to try to do what needs to be done. And and so they they do, they're amazing. I don't wanna lose, I don't wanna, I mean. We, you don't wanna lose seventy percent of your plow crew. You know, and and so that what's working, what's being done right now is working. Um, how well is it working? Look at the budget, you know, and if you're happy with what you're getting, then let's keep doing it.
I'm extremely happy with what we're getting.
It's been really good. The first year we took it over, it was a little rough, but after that, it's been good.
Any questions on snow removal, salt?
Do we have plenty now?
Yeah, we got another five loads.
Right.
So we got another hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty tons.
I have a video of how empty it was.
It's pretty good. Uh, Corbin, a question, last year that we budgeted for. Us to build something that would make moving salt easier. Did that ever get built?
Yeah, I've got, I've got parts. Um, again, it's a timing thing. And I'm one guy trying to do it all, you know, as far as that goes, but.
You got a conveyor up there.
No. I bought that, or this up there, or the conveyor that comes out the building. Yeah, that, we just use that to load. But um, I've kind of stopped because of the proposed development that's taking place on the Davis property. They might, and you guys met with them, they might want the property the salt shed sits on. And so it's winter, I've not really been able to do anything as far as building a pit down there anyways. But I've got, I've got all of the ductwork, the piping parts. To be able to convey salt up, I mean, you look at a grain, a grain elevator. Um, that drops grain into a building and that grain elevator goes across the roof of a building. And then it drops it into the building, so that's the plan. Um, but it's winter and I can't do anything right down, you know, right now anyways. And so it's in the budget to do, and hopefully I'll do it. Hopefully I'll get a decision from those guys here pretty quick.
Cause some of you might not realize that our salt shed is actually in Salem City.
Yeah.
On Salem property.
No, it's on, it's on city property, but it's in Salem's boundary.
Right, that's what I meant, it's our property in Salem's boundaries.
That's okay.
So they might request us to.
We just, we just didn't, we just didn't change the boundary line between Woodland Hills and Salem. Um, we bought the property from the Davises. Or traded it or whatever, and so that property was in Salem City when we acquired it, we just haven't. Read down the boundary adjustment, I mean, Salem word, Salem's giving me a hard time six or eight times about. They don't like, they don't like our building in their city. So fix your property, fix the boundary line adjustment, but.
Is there.
It's it's not going anywhere, it's not gonna go anywhere unless somebody wants to buy us out and move the building.
Yeah.
Hey, there's always a price.
Well.
Well, the developers have already.
Yeah, the loggers were adjusting patterns, let's just envelop the whole Davis property.
I'm happy for that, yeah. But. Where would you build it? And for the right price, we can make anything happen.
In my backyard, really, really difficult.
Yeah, that's true. FY twenty-three. All right, anything else, Corbett, we?
Not unless you guys have something for me.
Okay. What's that, water?
So fifty-one, the Water Enterprise Fund. H. Um, it's fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, I don't. Starts on fourteen.
Oh, yeah. Water intact fee.
Um, yeah, everything is is pretty much. Same. No, I want, I wanna say there's not much that's changed there, but we don't, we don't change much anyways from year to year. Water sampling goes up and down, um, I just got word back from Division of Drinking Water that has put us on a. A six-year cycle for, um. Vol- VOCs, volatile organic compounds on in the new well. They they require that you get four. Uh, one sample in every quarter of the year, and as long as those samples come back good, they'll put you on a six-year cycle. You're still on an annual cycle for nitrates and. Metals and, you know, whatever else, and so it goes up and down based on what we can get Division to approve. But that's the only thing that's really changed as far as our water sampling, instead of being on a quarterly sample requirement. We just got bumped up to a six-year cycle, which, you know. Doesn't say a ton, but I think those samples are two hundred bucks every quarter. So now we're six years apart instead of three months apart.
So when looking at this budget, we're a hundred and eighty-one thousand in the hole.
That includes, that line sixty-five fifty includes two hundred and fifty thousand for half of the building. So if you take that two fifty out and replace it with a with a mortgage payment or a bond payment, whatever, you're seventy thousand, sixty thousand shy.
Okay, and again, this is more for historical purposes. One of the parts about the water budget is it's really easy to forget. That your pipes have a forty-year life cycle, and so.
Or less.
You really should be. Having, um, additional money in your water budget. Every year so that you can save it away to replace those forty-year pipes.
Well, and that's safe, that's.
Forty, forty.
That's what that line.
That's why we're having troubles, cuz our pipes in A and B are fifty years old now.
Sixty-six ninety. Sixty-six ninety. That line item is your depreciation. One of the things that we were required to do by Division of Drinking Water, when we got the bond that we got, was we had to have a more appropriate depreciation cycle. So that number is dictated by Division of Drinking Water based on the
Hundred and ten.
The hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, based on that, that calculation.
Too quickly?
No, no, that's appropriate, that's appropriate according to Division of Drinking Water.
Yeah.
Now, realize that, yeah, the life cycle of pipe should be fifty years, okay? But that's not the pipe itself, the pipe itself, the, the plastic pipe is rated for three hundred years. But it's all the, it's all the fittings, the opportunuses that, that, that facilitate getting that water out of the pipe into the house is where the failure comes, and so a fifty-year life cycle is pretty standard, I think they required us to do this on a thirty-year life cycle. But realize too, that some of the pipe we just replaced was twenty-two years old. And, and that's abnormal, but when Bushnell's installed it, there was no standard.
Right.
And so one of the standards now requires on steel pipe, you have to have cathodic protection, you have to have, have rust protection. So that steel pipe cannot be in contact with the dirt. And so ductile iron pipe, you slide it into a plastic bag, if you can imagine. Taking a piece of pipe that weighs six hundred pounds and sliding it into a plastic bag before you install it. And then slide the plastic, you know, stress the bag over the joints and tape everything up. It's super labor intensive, but even with plastic pipe, all of the metal fittings that go on the ground had to be wrapped, they had to be greased. They had to be protected against corrosion. So that you could get fifty years out of it, instead of doing this all over again twenty-two years down the road.
I'm so grateful for your proficiency.
And it's, well, thanks, but it was the engineer.
Well, you still retain it, that's impressive.
So
And that appreciation, the reason we have to have that, that's a statement now. If you're going to replace it, you have to have a depreciation um, fund put in there and that's part of that payment.
But, but you think about that, that's reality too.
Yep.
You, you better have enough money to replace that when it's worn out.
Cause we didn't have that one, Bushnell's put it in, there was no requirement, not only for safety of the pipes, but also for replacement, even though they knew in forty years they'll need replaced. There was just never, ever any money put forward and that's why we're at the place we are now.
Well, but just to reach Toby didn't put in place some depreciation. It ended up not being enough. But that was more because of construction cost increases than anything else.
Yeah, last year we had a million dollars in savings just for water, we, we've done, been doing pretty good since about two thousand and ten-ish.
Yeah.
But we used several hundred thousand of it so we could meet the D D W loan and our portion of it, so we've been, we've been funding depreciation for a while and the, the Department of Division Drinking Water has been impressed that we even had that in a small city.
Yeah, they were.
So any, any questions on the water?
On water, there's still, we've got a, uh, we've still got a fair bit of six-inch pipe.
Yeah, that's what phase two was planned to do.
I think it's like two B or something like that is what Ted
Yeah, cause two A was that first part of Maple. And so the rest of
So Maple and Settlement became two A, so two B is the rest of Maple, the six-inch. Um, East Valley View, Mountain Belle, Schoolhouse, Highline, Skylake. Um, everything else that was six-inch, but I, I don't, funding never came through on that, did it?
Well, we Hasn't been determined yet, we are using a hundred percent of our ARPA funds, but that's only, you know, seventy thousand dollars. We can get lots based on population. We asked the state for a few million and they, we weren't, we weren't chosen, but they said they had a billion dollars and asked for fifty million dollars of of funds they had, so they said they were going to put in another hundred thousand dollars. But, and that we wouldn't need to reapply, they would just look at the existing applications that are there, but Ted and I both have not yet received anything or heard anything on that. Um, so we're just kind of waiting to see where they're at on it. And hopefully, this time around, we can, we can be chosen, they, they were, the governor really was stressing intergenerational projects or, you know, long-lasting projects. And we were saying, this will benefit for fifty years, that's a long time for pipe replacement and, but they were spending, we only asked for a few million, which we thought was good, but some of the plate, some of the, the cities that put in for like thirty million or fifty million, they were doing aquifer. What is it called? Recharge, aquifer recharge.
They had cooler projects.
It has cooler projects, so um, so that's where some of that money has gone and I asked our legislators to please be mindful of that and helping push us along and we'll hope that maybe we will be funded. Otherwise, we have to go back to the drawing board and, and go back to additional funding for water and roads.
Well, hey, I mean, if, if it became an emergency, which it probably already is, I think rural water was open to providing more funding.
But only responsible emergency then?
Well, rural water doesn't provide any funding, they facilitated it through other agencies.
They helped me find it.
Yeah.
But my point is, is this is what I'm not seeing in the budget, is I'm not seeing us replacing any of the two B area. Probably because what we were expecting was to get money from outside to do that.
There, there is, there is a little in there for the design.
And you talked in phase two. Two, two B, you know, whatever Ted called it. He sent, he sent me the maps and so I've got the maps of the different areas, but my, my point being that we really didn't have any funding for that. And that would be another choice that we as a council could make is yes, we want to finish that before we start new projects, we want to finish that project. Let's put our money towards that as opposed to some of these new things that, that are being proposed. Or we can just let it ride and wait till the pipes break and then, and then replace it.
So sixty-three thirteen in that water fund includes, includes engineering, so a lot of what they do, a lot of what Division of Drinking Water does is you have to be shovel-ready. And if you're not shovel-ready, then
Yeah.
they go to somebody else that is shovel-ready, and so the cities have to put up the, the funding upfront to do the engineering that needs to be done. So that when the funding becomes available, you're ready to go right now. And, and, and so sixty-three thirteen. Wasn't it?
Yeah, sixty-three thirteen.
Includes some in there for engineering, if we don't do phase two, or if we decide not to do it, then that, that, that category will come down that much. But again, you take out the two fifty and the water is already, you know, because you took out two fifty, the water's under budget by sixty grand.
And we also have to remember that one of the reasons we started this is we were having so many water main breaks. And we can't, I mean, Corbin could not keep up.
Well, we were, we were doing, I mean, there was an eleven week, eleven week period where we did seven breaks, or was it the other way around? Seven, eleven breaks in seven weeks?
I think so.
It's so expensive.
Yeah, in, in one day.
Yeah, and it's very expensive, I mean, not only time and energy, but also just the, that, that truck that we have to use and all.
I, I try, I figured one say that a water break costs you about four grand, forty-five hundred bucks. And there are a few of those breaks where all we did was pack, put a Band-Aid, a, a full circle clamp that goes around the pipe. And, and that's all you did, you didn't replace any pipe.
And still almost five thousand.
Five thousand bucks, just, yeah, by the time you excavate, by the time you you know, you fix it, by the time you backfill, compact, replace asphalt if you had to, you're, you're four, five thousand bucks.
So David, when you're talking about the prioritization of the different projects then, so how, how, what, what is, what does that mean in, in practical, real sort of terms? I mean, so is that, is that kind of like or in what we got budgetarily? Or do we need to make a specific choice as to whether we want to fund option A or option B? At this, well, for this cycle?
So it's coming up on ten o'clock.
Yeah.
And so, in all honesty, I'm gonna speak and it may not be the
Wow, I'm, I'm bracing for the worst.
So, so look, I want to expand this place too. I think it'd be a great idea, I think we need, I think we need to replace the, the concrete. All I'm saying is, I'd rather finish what we started last year before I start on new priorities next year.
Sure.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Right, so with respect to water, that is
I want to finish the six-inch pipe, I want the six-inch pipe gone.
Okay, you're not gonna do that without funding. And that's, and that's what we're looking at.
I did that.
The next phase, you're looking at three, three point two or three point four million bucks.
Yes.
Was it more than that?
It's quite a few million. Yeah, four million.
If we don't, if we don't get funding, you're not gonna do it, there's no way. But again, the, the emergency isn't there anymore. Now, we bought ourselves some time by getting rid of the old stuff, the stuff that was failing. Um, we've got stuff in town that's just as old. But the soils aren't as, as corrosive, the installation was, I, I can't say it's any better, but at least the soils aren't corrosive and so we're not having the issues with failing pipe like we did in the phase that we've already done. And so again, un- until you get funding, and that's what we're waiting on to find out from uh, through Ted, through Jones in the middle, is whether or not we get that funding. If we don't, we're not gonna do it.
Priority, I just want to be cognizant of the priority.
That's it.
Okay.
I just want to finish, I, I find that by finishing projects, you can give a sense of finality to them.
Sure.
And right now, I feel like the water, I, I hope that the pipes that we've got are in better soils and so forth, I don't know.
We haven't had, you know how many breaks we've had since we finished the water project?
None.
You know how good that feels?
I think going on Broad Hall, you patched it and then leaked again, I'm pretty sure. Seems like
The Broad Hall, we replaced a hundred percent of it.
Yeah, no, but I mean before, they'll, we had the breaks, it seems like we had a break to fix it and then we had like another one, right?
Yeah.
Spot.
But, and then also just on, on water. Uh, the state, the EPA has changed the rules for lead and copper. Now, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Flint, Michigan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Killed a ton of people, right? Made a ton more even sicker, it made a ton more sicker. But what happens is, when the, when the water, the chemi- the chemical compound or the chemical composition of the water changes from one well to the next, then, then all of the, the chemicals that have been, that have stuck to the inside of the pipe can be released, that's what happened in Flint, Michigan. So the EPA is coming out and saying, you know what, we're gonna avoid that. And you're gonna pay for it. Um, the state has stepped up and said, you know what? We're gonna help fund this, and so we have until twenty twenty-four to comply, at least with the first, first stage of this. I applied for seven hundred thousand dollars with a grant funding. If it happens, then we'll do it, if it doesn't, then we'll talk about it next year. So just so you're aware, but it, it's one of those unfunded mandates. But the state, by the EPA, the state is stepping in and helping to fund it. But if we don't get approval, we're, we're looking at a pretty big price that come up.
Okay. All right, any, anything else, Corbin?
Nothing at all.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Kill joy. It's a good way to end.
We're not finished.
Are we ending?
Yes, of course.
Oh, okay.
All right, I Craig, you cut you have everything, right? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so I think you're questioning. Mike.
I can be short and sweet.
Yeah, that's true, thank you for your information.
No, we're, we're here as a, as a venue, the way I understand it. But for you as a council to give us the projects that you feel most needed help in. So that we can dig a little deeper down in for you of what these projects. Uh, this phase two water, for instance, is something that probably the council is gonna have to consider. Because in order to get funding, those are going to have to be adjusted once again. And I know nobody wants to hear that. But it's, it's a reality that comes to play that we're gonna have to dig in on that and decide what we might have to do with it. We were really hard on the last grade, so I would like to hear from Jody if, if the citizens of the community are still planning on those or is it getting better?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, everybody thinks their water rates are too high.
Yeah.
And one of the things I think that residents aren't aware of is that water has to pay for water, and so when we have these projects, the only way to get that revenue is by increasing the rates and we have, didn't we do the water rate study with? And, and so that's why we knew where we could raise them to, but yes, additional revenue would be needed from water to go forward.
We reviewed every single resident in this city in what they were using, what they were paying, and we tried to equalize that across the board in the race so that it affected everyone equally much as possible. I think we did a pretty good job on that, actually. And so, you know, we've got to be thinking about that in the next round, but any, any of these projects that we're talking about here, we we would just say, bring it to us and let us dig down as deep as we can and then we'll bring a recommendation to the council, let's see how we, we feel about it, what we've we've studied, we'll go to other communities, we'll see what they're doing. And uh, we, we expect that when we're going out to bid on things, we're doing the old bids that we're required to do, just not one single bid and we're not showing favoritism to some some individual, we're doing what is best for this community.
Thank you.
You know, I would like that crew to look at our budget when it gets closer to final that we're proposing to the citizens. And, and I don't know if that's speaking probably in your realm, but I, I think you guys, if you get, like you get our total budget and seeing if we're in line. I'm, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm fearful of raising taxes, I do, I just, I'm fearful about that. But, but with your help, after you see why, or maybe we don't have to, but I don't know.
I think that's, and to me, you know, I, I didn't want to jump ahead, but I do think that, I mean, when you look at uh, the the discrepancy in, you know, what we want to spend and everybody's presentation, it was all
I know.
this is awesome stuff, we, we need everything that, and, and that's to say nothing, which I didn't get to, when you're talking uh, human resources. You know, there is a significant leap up in, you know, across the board, and so I think cost of living allowance for our human, our, our human resources, not to speak of you as though you're just objects, but I mean, it's like, that, that's something that also needs to be taken into consideration. And, and that doesn't even account for merit-based raises, so I think that, you know, that, that, that is the real challenge, and so if we can bring, uh, you know, a, a group of financial minds and on that, that if nothing else, I, I, yeah, I think that you know, we gotta come to terms with what we are as a city and, and I, I that, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Coroll, I I am very resistant to raising taxes, but I, I also you know, when it comes time to axing anything that has been proposed and even some of the things that haven't been specifically articulated, I, I, it's just very difficult to see or see where the cuts can or should be made without depriving the residents of what I would consider essential services.
Because what would happen, I don't know what the, the penalties would be if we did not have clean water resource, or even if it was, if it was something that was an emergency where we had to turn off the water for a very short period of time, et cetera. I think they give you a little, you know, flexibility, but you can't just say, well, those pipes are all broken and we won't be able to provide you water till next budget year, you know? That really wouldn't be something That really wouldn't be something we could do. So I think that we need to be, um.
Yeah, sadly, that's kind of the way it works.
Yeah. That's the way it works. So that's why we have to have a plan in place.
Building's on fire before you figure out how to put it out.
Yeah.
And, and that's unfortunate. And I think. That's where we're a little bit different. Because. We're here, we're listening to this information, we're getting this information. And we can see the upcoming fires. And so we should, even though, you know, we say, oh, we don't wanna raise taxes and. Trust me, I'd like to keep all my money too. But we see the fires and that's our job. That's why the citizens elected us. Was so that we can see and we can do our very best to plan in such a way that. They don't get hit with fire. That we can't put out.
Yeah.
Now, I'm gonna mention one other thing. I think this is really, really important. The way taxes work. Is we ask for a dollar figure. So as more homes are built, we don't get more money. Now, there's. A little bit of squishiness to that, cause in the first couple of years we do, but after that, we don't. So then, what ends up happening is our dollar figure remains pretty much level, the same. The only way we get to increase our actual dollars, our real dollars to come to the city is by asking for taxes. Even though our certified tax rate might go down. So. I think it's important for us as the council to go, wait, what really matters? Is it that our. Certified tax rate doesn't go up? Or is it that our real dollars don't go up? Which of those two do we really care about?
That's my preference, is to. Take in. Like we did last year, that, uh, but I don't wanna hurt things that we have to do, like you gotta, you know, prepare for fires. But I, I totally think of it as, we took X last year, if we took X plus five this next year, that's a raise in taxes to me.
Okay, so.
To me, I would say.
And you mean in real dollars?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that's, it's.
Cause it means we're, it means we're spending more, but you have to spend more of it than inflation.
I was gonna say, road construction costs have gone up. Uh, so, gas is gonna, wages have gone up.
I mean, it'll be easier to point fingers at blame, but, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, that, that's outside of our control. I mean, that, that you're.
That's totally true, yeah.
The costs have increased across the board.
I didn't see anything frivolous, like in requests for the budget, there was nothing frivolous.
No.
So, well, except for the basketball court, but.
Hey, that's not in there.
That is true.
That's not in there. That's not in there.
Might have been creative on that one, but.
I just, I just wanna make sure that when we're talking about it, and Doral, if you feel that way, I respect that. I'm not gonna say that you're wrong. Just let's make sure that we're talking about it the same way, that we're either talking about a dollar increase. Or a certified tax rate increase.
Right.
Those are two different things and they're not exactly equal and we gotta figure out.
When it's more status quo.
Because last year, we gave a certified tax rate decrease.
Right. But we took in more money.
But we took in more money. But we did a decrease.
And I think since I've been at this nine years now, we've increased the take-in every year, every year I've been on the council. And I, I joined the council in the very beginning thinking, I don't, I don't wanna. Raise taxes. And I've failed.
Have you kept up with inflation, Doral?
No, no, because, because I, I thought about it long.
No. Not at a typical point of.
And I kinda still do, you know? You know, we're, we're educating citizens better over time and, and citizens are beginning to tell me, a few. Raise my taxes, because if you don't, you're gonna get behind. You know, there are some people that, that see it even better than I do, but. Well, that's why I do like the idea of like, I mean, water, garbage. And then you make this point, I think it's a great point. I mean, we keep a hundred percent of that. I mean, it might be the, the residents pay a little bit higher rates, but that might be something that we. Need to look more carefully at as, as a way to not only increase our revenues, not in an abusive way, but in a way that allows us to get. Every, not, not fifty cents on the dollar, which is.
If we're lucky, were we at twenty five cents on the dollar? We increase our rate, the people's property taxes are going up.
A child goes to the school district and a child goes to the county.
Goes up hundred and we get thirty three, twenty five? Well, six.
No, about eighty percent.
It depends on like, what your rate is.
It depends on, it depends on who raises the taxes. Because if the school district raises their certified tax rate, your taxes go up, but soon you're gonna get in it.
Right.
Uh, and, and that's why I say, I think we need to look at this from a more creative standpoint, just seeing taxes as our way to get the money. There's other options. So, Corbin and I have been looking hard at, you know, what if we take on garbage? What if we replace waste management with our own garbage? We can partner then with Elk Ridge, do theirs. We can partner with, uh, Ocean, we can tackle theirs. And now we've got a profit center. Um, we don't have to change the rates we're currently charging and now that ninety seven thousand dollars that's on our budget, it's not a pass through. But there's actually now a net.
Yeah.
And actually, there already is a net. We're charging a hundred and something. So we're, we're making a ten grand or something on garbage right now. But. We also can compete, cause I've talked with Terry Fecklin quite a bit about this as well, and he says we can compete directly with waste management, but we actually have a stronger angle because we're not paying fuel tax.
Or, or turning a profit.
So we can actually really do quite well.
Yeah.
You know, Salem, for instance, is making bank. Off of their sewer, off of all their utilities. They are killing it. And we're. Raising property taxes. Do seriously just say they're killing it on sewer? Yes, they are. They are making so much money. That's a crap load. They are making a crap ton of money. But, I think what we can do is we can look at things. A little bit more creatively, and I don't know, obviously, I don't know the history, I don't know what we have looked at in the past. Um, I do know that Corbin has a billion ideas, some of them are actually viable. But Craig doesn't share them as much. He's got some of the fire and the brush trucks and all those things. I just think there are some things we can do to increase our revenue side. We're really good at adding line items. Sorry, Chris. We're good at adding line items on the expense side.
That would be.
But we're not as good at like, adding line items on the revenue side. And that, I think is where it gets really far.
Yeah, no, I agree. Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to close by saying, express appreciation of Newt. The work he's doing on the committee, uh, it, it appears that we might have a CPA.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, he was at the conference meeting the other night, and when I heard him say CPA, I did think of you, but I'm glad Kerry Corbin.
Yeah, I did.
So we're gonna be talking to him and we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
And I wanna thank Corbin and Craig and Jody. For their work on the budgets and, uh, working with us, so it's good to meet with it, so thank you. And thank you as a council too. This is a lot.
We just got to number three on the budget. This is almost on our agenda. This is almost as fast as it gets, I mean.
Well, and so, council discussion, um, now, as, as we, as I mentioned, I mean, this was largely a brainstorming session, so. We can certainly continue with the council discussion. I don't want to belabor any issues that we've largely covered, but. I would like to get a sense, if you haven't already voiced them, as to everyone's priorities, um, just so we can make sure that when they're trying to set a budget. That we can do so, uh, you know, and Corbin's, we. Needs everyone's expectations.
Can I ask a super unpopular question?
Yeah. So we waited for.
Four hours.
Four and a half hours.
Very good. Is there any way, like I said, super unpopular, that we could terminate the contracts for the cameras? And resend that up to a different RFP and get different bids with a different. Attention, cause as far as my understanding goes. We didn't get any other bids, really. I'm just thinking fifty grand.
That's how we do it.
Fifty grand is, is a lot of money. And I think there's, there's options there, cause I was sitting in council meeting when that was passed. And nobody ever could give that, where are the bids? Council never saw the bids. Um, and that's something that I'd love to see.
I didn't see this.
We, we can speak to that.
Yes.
So, so we actually requested multiple bids and no one would give us bids, because we're such a one-off type of thing. It was at least the conclusion that we drew as a, as a committee, that no one wanted to do our job. And we were, in, in the end, we kinda felt like we were fortunate to get the one. Company to actually come and do it. Now, having said that, I agree, we really wanted to have additional bids, but we just kept striking out. And so, we eventually agreed that, hey. This is, we're, we're just probably lucky to get someone to do it. So, if it can be canceled, which I don't know if it can be. I, I would welcome that if you can point us in a direction where we can get bids, but that was what we had. That was the, the problem we ran into. No one wanted to give us bids.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Newt. Corbin, what did you have bid wise?
Uh. Company that's on state contract. It's called Geneva Communications. They, they contacted me.
Okay, and did they submit a bid?
Yeah, there was, it was a lot different. We weren't burning apples to apples.
Okay.
We had another bid too, besides the one that we went with. And I'd have to dig in and find that, but. We did have another bid.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because we haven't seen cameras yet, and I know I've heard that they're waiting on the fiber to be installed first before they come and install it. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think it's a fair question.
Who's, who's brand running that?
The.
Counselors?
Just like Chris, Chris has been. Okay. Brand running's the wrong word. He's been guiding it. Um. Just because. Once we kinda passed it as council, it became Chris to move forward with it. So, and that's where.
I think it's worth looking at.
I'd be cautious on a public open meeting where the council already voted on something and issued a contract and made a down payment, now go ahead and cancel it.
But that's why I just asked the question, what's, what are our possibilities?
And, and the finance committee looked at this for several weeks. They went to Bosch, they went to many things. They've even looked at the cheap stuff, you can get a Costco. You're going back on some people that have spent a lot of time on this, just, just for some history and background on them.
There's a lot of history behind this.
We're talking years.
Long term.
In, in oh six, we spent sixty grand at BMW. And it wasn't as nice a system as this was. But it held up. We didn't have issues with them. I mean, it was, but it was a ninety day difference from a regular. Camera system, cause I'd blown away when I, when I got them, but the. They held up and they did their job.
The, the point is. Again. New council, you, you can do whatever you want. Um, but. I would, before you go down that path, I would. Do the work to find out what's already been done. But I would hesitate actually to ever say that for the sake of more information, of better information comes around. You know? It makes sense to open the question up on occasion, right?
What's out there that we would, uh, be potentially forfeiting?
And that's the question, right, is.
Just curious.
Yeah. We don't know, right? And I've asked Jody.
Well, I've got a contract, I need to look at it. Jody has everything. I've seen her folders on there.
Oh, no.
She can find it, dude.
I, I told her I was making folders organized, and she opens hers and it was like this. I, I hope mine never looks like that. Folders inside folders, it's.
And we can, we can get that information, right? We don't have to do that here.
And she could never live in all that.
Yeah. Correct, yeah, we can table it, but I just, just a question.
Yeah, a, a, a fair one. Anything else? Newer, any of the other council members?
My biggest concern is that we don't get into the savings anymore. That's my number one priority.
Yeah. Certainly, it's, I'm gonna strive for that.
And I'm concerned that. You know, both, both our accounts, and I, I get that, you know, part of it is the spending and the building. We get rid of that and all of a sudden, a lot of things balance better than what we do right now.
I would like to bring up.
But I'm concerned that. We've got, we. We've got some trimming to do.
Yeah, well, and when we say we don't wanna dip into our savings, we have to be careful, because again, state, state law says we can only keep twenty five percent. So, we do have anything left over. That's what goes into that fund balance, which we call savings, that we have to transfer out, because if we, we get audited and we have too much in there, that's a problem. So we either have to move it to something that we're already.
Right, and I'm fine with it going in a capital investment, but I don't want it.
Or into, to, in, or moving it into a capital project, or moving it into the general fund to pay for something. That we may say, oh, this is a priority for us, because some councils open their budgets every month. I was talking to somebody about it and they said, oh, we open it every month and we move things around, because as time progresses, you realize that, oh. You know, at this time of year, this is what we're thinking, but in six months. You know, inflation has changed and the supply chain has changed and all of this, we may say, let's get some of that out, right, and move it around. So I think that we have to be, um. Cautious in saying never in something, right?
I didn't say never, I was.
I know, but I'm just saying, we don't want to, and as a priority, we just have to remember that we don't, we can't stop it.
But I mean, how in there's a maximum amount that we're allowed to leave in there? I'd like to see that.
And I think, Chris, don't we leave about seventeen percent in there?
It depends what year it is, but yeah, we, that, that's our goal, is about eighteen percent. Some years it's more, some years it's less, just depends when projects get done, but we will be moving the money to capital projects like Janet was talking about and just making sure that.
And to me, that is a savings account as well. So, to me, I do, I'm like, yeah. I'm fine with that. Yeah.
We just don't want ongoing funds, always doing deficit spending, meaning that we're using that for ongoing.
Right. That's my concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, which is a different, different ballgame, yeah.
I'm fine with it when it came to little improvements, I just don't want, yeah.
Alright, well, and I, I, you know, we'll be having further conversations with, you know, everyone in their presentations. Again, trying to even just pare down, you know. Mine just come down to what can't you live without? Hopefully that won't be everything, but it is gonna have to, well, take a look at, uh, some of those. Questions. So, but a- again, if, if anybody else, obviously, you know, we can have further conversations going forward, but, uh, just trying to get a sense on that. Did I catch you off?
No.
Okay. Uh, so the data proposed mayor's budget presentation. Uh, really sure how that's typically. Someone throw me a bone here. I don't know really what.
Isn't it the first, first meeting in June?
No, no, we do it before then.
Or is it before that?
So, by the first meeting in June, we have to. Have a public hearing on the proposed budget, is that correct, Chris?
Yes, we won't, we probably won't even have our property tax numbers by then, but. We, uh, it has to be voted on by June twentieth, I believe, for sure, final budget approved, or if we're gonna do a certified tax rate. Then just a temporary budget.
Yeah, so that, so the reason it's due June twentieth, then we only have one council meeting prior to that, which is our first. First meeting in June that we have to finalize and say, we're voting to approve this budget, or we're voting at the temporary budget. And then the county says, oh, your temporary budget doesn't match your numbers, you need to do the taxation, which we have in.
Okay, so with respect to the council, uh, the, the proposed budget presentation.
For the mayor.
Of, of a, a formal proposed budget presentation, how much lead time came, what?
I think April.
April.
Better sheet for April twelfth, Mayor, to bring your budget back, to let the council have it at that point, and then maybe a public hearing on the twenty sixth or tenth of May. And then even a vote that night, or you could do a vote on May twenty fourth. For the budget. Now you're starting to get close.
Right, if we had it earlier, it's okay.
Yeah.
Mike not wanna vote if we just get it, you know, the date.
Well, because it has to be a public hearing first, so it has to be at least fourteen days noticed before we.
Okay, well, so, well, well, uh, so. April twelfth, we'll do the, the formal proposal and then we'll lock in the public hearing date.
Mike, Mike get to see it then.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And sometimes we have the public hearing, so that we can get the, the public's feedback, and then it gives us time to go back. We don't always wanna vote on the same night that we get the public hearing, because that. We have taken all of their suggestions into. Into, into the reality of the budget unless we have the public hearing and then we sit for a few hours and go through it again. So it's, sometimes it's. So it's sometimes it's good to have that little space in between.
Okay, now.
I mean, just to thought.
Well, that's true, but keep in mind one thing. If you are proposing that we increase the certified tax rate. Then we get a much longer runway. We don't have to worry about it till August.
Okay.
Well, we have to pass a tentative budget.
True, but.
Very temporary.
More, but we have, but we have a lot more room.
Well, and I.
To play with it.
I think, Chris, our 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 two options, besides, um, we have three options. We have the budget that we can get, which we we basically have to approve before we get our certified tax rate. So so we're approving one based on maybe what we think it will be. And then, um, once it's certified, what we've done the last two years is we maintain our tax rate so that. But it it is technically an increase, even though we've maintained it, so we still have to have a. Uh, truth in taxation, and we tell people, we're maintaining exactly what we've had the last two years.
Okay.
And that's one option, or if we go the other option, it is, okay, maintaining doesn't even touch inflation right now. We're going to have to increase. So there's kind of three options right there.
Okay.
That we have to consider, I'll watch you, but. Nobody ever wants to.
Yeah.
That's the tough part.
All right, well, um, then I think we're probably, uh, all set. Thanks, everyone.
Do we decide April twelve and April twenty sixth?
Well, April twelfth on the proposed budget, and if it's okay, um, can I talk over with Chris and consider our options? And and then get back to everybody on the other dates.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I I have two other notes that I want to share with the council, but I don't want to. I want to ask, is it inappropriate to do it through email? Or can I just email you some some thoughts? And they're not a lot, just some little bit.
Yeah, no, I think the only risk that we run into is when we do emails, right, we we're.
So I want to just share with you.
Okay, yeah.
For now, because you said something tonight that I took an interest in that had to do with city employees.
Okay.
I think that we need to take care of.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, yeah, yeah, send me yours, send me yours off. All right, so thanks, everyone.
Yeah. Are we are we adjourned?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Are we adjourned?
Oh, that's. Yeah, okay, I'll entertain, I'll always get to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make them.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, as a member of Pratt, I second by Councilwoman Elliott, all in favor?
Bye.
You adjourned.
Bye.
You guys.
Thanks, me too.